Okay. Roll call please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Hawes?
Here.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Here.
Ms. Liscavich? Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Here.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Ten of eleven?
All right, thank you. We'll now have public comment on the proposed ordinance. I'm not reading the whole paragraph, the bond refinancing. Uh, we do have one, we have one, uh, one slip for Mr. Griffith? Okay. Anybody else's public comment on the, on the first public hearing? Ms. Lawrence, can you switch the screen? Because it says there's somebody with a hand up. Uh, Mark? Mr. Raybo?
Mr. Chair, this is Mark Raybo of Hazelton speaking. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question at the... I don't think it was answered, but, uh, is this refinancing to include the bar... Is this refinancing including the monies for the human services agencies, uh, because of the current, uh, state budget impasse? Um, and if it is, will the interest payments and the penalties, uh, be included, uh, or is that going to be, uh, is the state gonna give, provide something in writing to Luzern County that, uh, those penalty, the penalty costs and the interest, uh, the interest payments are gonna be included in that? Is, is that, uh, is that what, uh, is this included in that bond refinancing?
Is that the end of your comment, Mr. Raybo?
Yes, that is. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Okay, all right, thank you. And no, this is not the same thing. Anybody else's public comment? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First, public hearing is adjourned. It's 5:56. I'll call the second public hearing to order. We already had the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Roll call please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Hawes?
Here.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Here.
Mr. Liscavich?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Present.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Ten of eleven?
Thank you. We'll now have public comment on the proposed ordinance adopting the 2026 Long Range Operational Fiscal and Capital Plan for Luzern County. Any public comment? Uh, Mr. Raybo?
Mr. Chair, this is Mark Raybo of Hazelton speaking again. And, uh, on the capital plan, I would just like to remind yourself, members of council and the county manager, as I've had discussions with her... replenishing the capital, uh, budget, the capital fund, uh, which would provide for the capital budget. I do believe since, uh, you know, council's gonna be talking about this at the voting session about the, um, about the LERTAs. I think that what needs to happen in terms of replenishing the capital fund and the manager floor usage of the TIF rather than LERTAs for certain projects. And the reason I state this is not only because of the TIF's, uh, unique ability to replenish, uh, not only capital funds, because, uh, that's why...
Mr. Raybo, your mic is...
Counties and the school districts to replenish their capital. Hello?
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Raybo. We can hear you. Keep going.
Okay, so the, the capital fund can be replenished through the TIFs because they're a tax deferment, not a tax exemption. Uh, the county and the, uh, school district and the municipality would still collect the same amount of... But it would... Uh, like the Arena Project, for example, the County Redevelopment Authority, and, uh, it generated over nine million dollars for the county, but the county never realized nine million dollars, since seven million dollars went to the city of Wilkes-Barre without having, uh, the city not paying one penny into the, uh, the Arena Project because of the fact that they said, well, Coal Street, Coal Street wasn't included, and the county manager particulars. But I think councils should look at, uh, the TIF, uh, because of the fact that the TIFs, when managed properly and overseen properly, can replenish the capital fund. So I, I would encourage and urge the county, uh, council and the county manager to explore that option moving forward. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Anybody else's public comment on the, uh, public hearing? Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor? The hearing will restart in two minutes at 6:01. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
All right, everybody, at 6:01 PM, I'd like to call the voting session to order. We have already had the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
Roll call please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Hawes?
Here.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Here.
Mr. Liscavich?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Sabatino?
Present.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
You have ten of eleven?
All right, thank you. Um, the proclamation for the Women's Club, uh, will be delayed until a September meeting. Uh, the Women's Club said that they wanted to get pictures and stuff. They didn't have enough members that would be here tonight. Um, so we'll do that at a future meeting. Deletions from the voting session agenda? Oh, before, I apologize, before we get started, Attorney Skeen, can you announce the executive session?
Yes. Prior to this meeting, we had an executive session to discuss two litigation matters. And we are taking that under advice, and we will update council per their request in short order. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any deletions from the voting session agenda? I would like to entertain one. If somebody would like to make a motion to delete number five, the motion to adopt the resolution authorizing county manager to apply for municipal assistance grant to aid in funding an updated zoning ordinance. Um, the deadline for that grant has been pushed back, so they're going to, uh, they're going to do it at a later time. Okay. Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, number five is deleted. Let that reflect the change of numbers. Any other deletions? Is there a motion to adopt? Motion in a sec, is there a second? All right, motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is adopted. We'll now have public comment on voting session agenda items only. All right. I have two emails here. Mr. Zola, I know you have a comment that you put down. Would you like me to read the email, or would you like to make the comment? It's ju... I'm just gonna read, I'm just gonna read the first part of your email since the, um, there was like an attachment. All right, how about I have you just make the public comment instead, because the email's it's short. I want to give you the full time you're gonna wanna have. Okay. All right, I have one email that is from Alana Roberts, who is the manager of Community Relations for PPL. And attached to it is a, uh, a letter which she asked to be read for the public comment. It says, "Dear Councilmembers, PPL Electric Utilities appreciates the opportunity to provide comments regarding the transmission line project and resolution that is scheduled for discussion at your upcoming public meeting. We value the county's interest in this important infrastructure initiative and welcome the opportunity to share our perspective. Their proposed Sugarloaf project is designed to meet the growing electricity demand in Luzern County and support long-term economic development. As you are aware, the greater Hazelton area continues to attract manufacturers and large, uh, power uses, and we anticipate electricity demand in the region to grow significantly up to 16 times current levels by 2030. To meet this demand, PPL Electric Utilities plans to construct, uh, construct 12 miles of new transmission lines and two new switchyards, utilizing the existing right-of-way corridor to minimize environment... The project will enhance reliability and resilience for all customers in the region and is part of a broader effort to modernize the electrical grid. We understand that new infrastructure can raise concerns, and we are committed to working closely with landowners to minimize impacts. Our approach includes fair compensation for easements, transparent communication, and ongoing landowner and stakeholder engagement. The project will review and, uh, will require review and approval by the Pennsylvania Utility Commission and anticipate construction to begin in spring 2026 with completion in fall 2027. After reviewing a draft of the proposed Luzern County resolution, PPL Electric would like to clarify the following points to address questions and concerns expressed. One, there is a need for the project to support the exponential growth in the northeastern Pennsylvania region. As a public utility, PPL Electrical has an obligation to serve all customers. When there is a projected low growth in the area, we are required to take prudent steps to meet that demand. The company does not get to pick and choose which customers it wishes to serve. Number two, there will not be a 200-foot wide service road. Instead, PPL Electric will, uh, uh, it will use existing service roads from the prior 69-kilovolt transmission line to the extent practical. New access roads may be installed as needed to support construction and operation of the line. Typical access roads are approximately 20 feet wide, and if the company does not have the permanent access road rights, it will restore the access road to its per, prior condition when construction is complete. Number three, PPL Electric is not creating a new transmission corridor. The project, as proposed, utilizes an existing corridor operating on easements the company has held for over a century. While PPL Electric seeks to utilize right-of-way to build the new line, we have sought to widen the existing right-of-way to 200 feet to reduce the number and height of structures required for the new line. It's not disrupting pristine land. It will utilize an existing transmission corridor that until recently had a transmission line in place. To the extent houses now exist near the corridor, they were built after the transmission easements were established with full knowledge of PPL Electric's rights on the property. In addition, we have no evidence there is a long-term effect on property values from a project like this. There's no threat to the environment. Our track record shows that we work cooperatively with regulatory agencies, obtain all required permits, and meet all environmental requirements and regulations under the terms of our permits. Once built, the transmission line involves minimal activity and its environmental impact is minimal. The health and safety concerns, as articulated in the resolution, are misguided. PPL Electric safely operates thousands of miles of transmission lines across its service territory, including areas more densely populated in the Sugarloaf Valley region. All lines are constructed in accordance with applicable safety standards. Additionally, the alternative routes listed in the draft resolution are not viable solution. These proffered routes would be more disruptive from land use, environmental, and constructability standpoints, or would violate PJM reliability criteria. The proposed alternatives are also within the Sugarloaf Valley region, and changing that would shift the impact from one group of landowners to another. As such, without new information, the company at this time has no plans to either pause this project or choose an alternative route, since the route we will be submitting to the PUC later this year is the one that has the least environmental and community impact. PPL Electric looks forward to continued dialogue with council members and landowners who have questions or concerns about this project. Customers and community can access information about the project online at SugarloafProject.com, where a dedicated email address is also available. We believe that open dialogue is essential and welcome to opportunity to provide additional information and address any issues directly. I respectfully ask you to include this letter as part of the record of the meeting and that the proposed resolution is discussed. Thank you again for your engagement and for considering these comments. We look forward to continuing a constructive dialogue with Luzern County, its council, and its residents. Sincerely, Shelby A. Linton Ketti, the Director of Public and Regulatory Affairs from PPL." Okay. We have a bunch of slips. Mr. Griffith? Okay. Uh, Brenda Rizzo?
My name is Brenda Rizzo, and I'm located in Black Creek Township. There are two lines. They did not discuss the Black Creek one, only the one that's going through the Sugarloaf area. A friend of ours that's been working with us, Andy, uh, could not make it tonight, Andy Sanco, so he asked me to read this for you. I'm not good at reading with, I'd rather just speak from the heart, but this is from Andy. A lot of his property is being taken by the Sugarloaf line going through. My name is Brenda Rizzo. I live in the Luzern County, and I'm here tonight because it's clear the PPL's proposed 500-kilovolt transmission line is not being built for this community. We will not get anything out of it at all. It's being built through it. Let's be honest, this project benefits corporate developers, not the people living under its shadow. 240-foot high with the light on top. That's how big these monstrosities are. Here's what needs to happen: No more delays. Vote yes for the ordinance. This transmission line is not just unsightly, it's unsafe. Studies have linked high-voltage lines to increased risks of childhood leukemia and many more significant health issues. Vote in support of the residents, not big business. In fact, you can't get too many studies here in the US. They're always squashed. I talked to someone that even some of the major universities that do studies, the studies are squashed. You have to go overseas to Switzerland or some of the European countries to get good studies on the EFM's. Then property values, the National Institute Environmental Health Science reports values drop significantly for homes near lines like this. These aren't theoretical harms. They're real, and they hit families where it hurts most. My farm, right now, is 101 acres. At 10,000 an acre, it's worth $1 million. I don't want to sell the farm. I want to give it to my children. But the value of the property goes almost in half. The last time I read it was 44 percent, so now it's less, it's a little more than in half. Do you want your property to go down that far? Is PPL going to give me more than a dollar for my easement? Second of all, cancel the LERTA tax breaks that were handed out for this project. Billion-dollar companies do not need handouts. Local taxpayers are footing the bill and getting nothing to say in the process. Let's not, that's not economic development, that's exploitation. Third, freeze any new LERTA approvals of the Sesquahanna Power Plant until PPL permanently abandons their preferred route. PPL itself profits more than $1 billion per year. A price cannot be put on good health and the value people put on their properties. PPL can afford to reroute the proposed line. If their project is so essential, they should be willing to find a path that doesn't put Luzern County fam, families at risk. They can also build some kind of plant near where it's necessary instead.
All right, thank you, Ms. Rizzo. Okay, next up, we have Mike Hoover. You're, you're okay till the end? Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, Wendy La Roche? I'm sorry if I said it wrong. I can't read your handwriting. Okay, La Rock? Okay. Mark Clark?
Thank you all for the opportunity to speak. I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but I feel compelled to do so on behalf of my family. Everyone here has something to lose. We're all gonna lose acreage if PPL gets their way. My family loses everything. They take my house, my barn, and my land, and they kick three disabled senior citizens out on the street penniless. Now, I'm physically handicapped. My wife is physically handicapped. My older brother that lives with us is mentally and physically incapacitated, in the middle of dementia, and he's blind. We purchased this house 40 years ago with the intention of making it handicap accessible. I've spent those years making it handicap accessible. And something happened. I got old. Now we just purchased our first wheelchair. This is all put in place for this. Now, I have a background in electronics and real estate. I know how to negotiate a contract. I've been trying to operate with good faith with PPL. Basically, they lie. Every single thing they have said to me verbally, to my face, or over the phone, has been a bold-faced lie. Every single dimension, every fact and figure they put down on paper and sent me has been a bold-faced lie. I know. I have measured the property, okay? I know what is going on, and I know what they're saying is wrong. What they're intending to put in there will make my house unlivable. We have three seniors living on social security. They're gonna put us out on the streets penniless. Oh, I'm sorry, they offered me $1. I had a few words to say about that. Now they're offering to buy my property for $1,600. They do not operate ethically. They will not negotiate in good faith. They don't care about the law. They circumvent the law. They could care less about what the impact it has on the community, and it doesn't help any one of us. This is only serving amazon.com. This does not upgrade the electric for our community. We have nothing to gain from this. And I just wanted to tell you that I'm trying to negotiate and work with them in good faith, but I can tell you, I could talk a half an hour of the illegal and immoral and unethical things that these people are doing. And I'm trying to save my family. I'm trying to save my house. I can't do this alone. I will lose. I need these people to help me, to keep my family together, and I need your help. I can't put compassion down on a piece of paper. I can't put ethics and morals on down on a piece of paper and give you a line graph. This is the best I can do to get my point across to you. I don't like bullies. I've been fighting bullies all my life. They're a bully. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Zola?
John Zola, Sugarloaf. I just want everyone to know that, that PPL letter that was just read, um, the Alliance to Stop the Line provided a, um, rebuttal to that. I, I hope all of you viewed it. I sent it to everyone. And I, and I want the public to know that that's available for their view as well.
That'll be, it'll be part of the record.
Okay, so if I could, uh, ask you guys, I, I passed out this, three pages of, of pictures. So if I may direct your attention to Exhibit 1A, which shows the wooden poles illustrated in the photograph. These are the size and style of poles that the landowners agreed to in the early 1900s. The 69-kV line was meant to provide electricity to homes and to families. So you could see... Everyone see those small wooden poles running through the property there? So that's what was agreed to when the original easement was made. Now if I could direct your attention to Exhibit 1B, which shows the massive 500-kV steel poles in the picture. This is what PPL now claims they have the right to build, and we strongly disagree. Now, these poles are spaced at 500 feet apart. The best that could happen is if they stretched it to 800 feet, there'd be one less pole. Still horrific. This is just horrible. This should not be near anyone's home or on their property. This is not what the people in the early 1900s signed up for. Had they known this could ever happen, I doubt very much they would have accepted it. Common sense tells us that the original intent of the line and the subsequent agreement with the landowners was never to allow an industrial-sized 500-kV line to pass through their properties. For PPL or for anyone else to suggest otherwise is disrespectful, disappointing, and frankly nauseating. It is my opinion that PPL, with its unlimited lobbying power, legal teams, and nearly unlimited money, intends to fully take advantage of regular people, many of whom are living on low or fixed incomes, in an effort to enrich themselves. We are not backing down from this fight. Tonight, you have the supreme opportunity to show the citizens of Luzern County that you stand with them. And for some of you, tonight is also an opportunity to show whether voters should or should not support you in November. And finally, the last picture, because I know some of you were out to the site, and I thank the ones that did come out to actually see it with their own eyes, is just the finished product, because the other pictures didn't have the finished product with the basketball court on it and the pole. So that's just the finished product. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zola. Next up, we have Andy Sanco.
Good evening. Thanks for this opportunity, and to the surprise of Mrs. Rizzo, I am here. Um, my name is Dr. Andy Sanco, Sugarloaf Township. I'm here tonight to urge this council to take three bold and necessary actions to safeguard the people of Luzern County. First, vote yes on the resolution opposing PPL's proposed 500-kV transmission line through southern Luzern County. This project does not progress. It's exploitation. And it's PPL spin. PPL is forcing landowners into a corner while hiding behind vague promises of data centers, AI, and century-old right-of-ways. Science is clear. These lines threaten public health, property rights, property values, and the environment. A yes vote by you tells PPL that our citizens are not expendable. Second, rescind the LERTAs that were granted without proper public input. These tax breaks benefit outside developers, not local families, certainly not anyone in Luzern County. The people who elected you deserve transparency and accountability. At a minimum, residents must understand what a LERTA is, what it costs, and who truly benefits. Residents of Luzern County do not benefit from these LERTAs, billion-dollar companies taking our money benefit. Third, impose a moratorium on all new LERTAs south of the Sesquahanna Power Plant until PPL abandons their preferred route. These projects are all tied together. Developers coming here chasing cheap tax deals and the power lines built to serve them. Until this is resolved, no further break should be handed out. You took an oath to represent the people of Luzern County. That means putting residents first, ensuring open government, and protecting the health of our communities. Tonight, you have a choice. Stand with the families? Stand with your voters? Or stand with the people who, stand with the people who entrusted you with this responsibility? Vote yes on the resolution for the people of Luzern County and not big business coming into Luzern County. Finally, impose a moratorium until fairness and transparency are restored. Have the courage to draw a line in the sand. And the bravery, the bravery to lead, not for profit, but for the people of Luzern County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Linda Yurisch?
Good evening, council members. My name is Linda Yurisch, and I'm a licensed nurse with nearly 40 years of experience caring for patients, people, human beings, in hospitals and homes across this region. I've seen firsthand the short and long-term tolls of chronic health conditions on the population, especially the elderly and our children. I've been privileged to witness the births of many children and honored to hold countless fragile hands at the end of life. I've comforted grieving families and experienced firsthand the results of how chronic illness related to environmental pollutants have and can devastate these same lives. That's why I'm here tonight. This is not just about land or a power line. It's about public health and community safety. PPL's proposal to run 500-kV transmission lines through our neighborhoods poses serious risks that cannot be ignored. They insist there are no health concerns, but their evidence is largely internal. Independent research, not funded by utility companies, shows a different story. Long-term exposure to electromagnetic field, electromagnetic fields, EMFs, from high-voltage lines has been linked to serious health risks. EMFs from these lines, EMFs from lines like these can extend over 250 yards in every direction, two and a half football fields in every direction. Would you let your children's... Would you let your children's play there, your family's children play there? Would you let your wife or your husband plant and tend a garden there, hold picnics and family gatherings? Something to think about and think hard. Peer-reviewed medical research has linked long-term EMF exposure to cancer, childhood leukemia, sleep disorders, stress, anxiety, depression, cognitive and behavioral disorders. This isn't fear-mongering. It's science and it's reality. And it's your responsibility to act before harm is done. Adding insult to injury, PPL doesn't even have the legal right-of-way for this project. Yet they've made clear the threat of eminent domain to take land from residents who refuse to sell. That's not partnership. It's exploitation, and it is unacceptable. And we need to talk about leadership. PPL CEO Vincent Sorji, who once lived in nearby Lackawanna County, knows this region and its people. For him to now push a hazardous and unnecessary project through our backyards onto his former neighbors and friends while making over $11 million a year, that's not just disappointing, it's disgraceful. So I'm calling on you, our elected leaders, to stand with the people you represent. Vote yes on the resolution requiring PPL to abandon their preferred route. Rescind tax breaks given to billion-dollar corporations. Enact a moratorium on new tax incentives until this project is permanently off the table. This is about more than infrastructure. It's about protecting the health, safety, and future of Luzerne County. I spent 40 years caring for this community, and tonight I'm sincerely asking, no, I'm sincerely pleading with you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Tricia Marnell.
Good evening, council members, and thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Tricia Marnell, and I'm from Sugarloaf Township, former Cunningham Mayor. Some of you know me as Kimberly Plotex's sister, who previously ran for Luzerne County Council. Sugarloaf is one of the many communities directly impacted by this onslaught. Sugarloaf, Neskapeck, Butler, and Black Creek Township supervisors have already had the courage to pass a resolution opposing this project. Now I ask you to do the same, to have the same courage and responsibility to stand up for our residents. Look beyond Luzerne County. St. Charles, Missouri was the first city in the nation to ban data centers outright, protecting families and the environment. There are three actions this council must take tonight, as previously mentioned. Vote yes on the resolution opposing the transmission line. The World Health Organization classifies electromagnetic fields from power lines as possible carcinogenic. Our county already faces elevated cancer rates, 715.5 cases per 100,000 people, well above the state and national averages. This line will only worsen these risks for families already burdened by poor health outcomes. Rescind that LERTA tax break blindly given to big business. PPL profits more than $1 billion a year, and as mentioned before, Vincent Sorji, whose roots trace back to Lackawanna County, he takes home over $11.3 million annually. Meanwhile, taxpayers will subsidize the PPL project with no public input, no guarantees for community benefit, and rising electric bills. This is corporate welfare, plain and simple. Finally, this council must impose a moratorium for all new LERTA tax breaks south of the Susquehanna Power Plant until PPL permanently abandons the 500 KV 12-mile line. This moratorium is crucial. The proposed route threatens vital water sources, disrupts households, and increases exposure to hazardous electromagnetic fields for thousands of residents. Other communities have acted decisively to prevent such harm. Luzerne County must do the same and demand transparency and accountability before any further approvals. It is important to call out the Joint Comprehensive Plan created by Luzerne and Lackawanna Counties that calls for sustainable, community-focused growth and environmental protection. PPL's proposal flies in the face of that vision. It's time for the council to stand with the people, not with corporate profits. Yes, vote yes on opposing the transmission line. Rescind all LERTA tax breaks. Enforce a moratorium on any new LERTA approvals south of the Susquehanna Power Plant until PPL permanently abandons preferred route. Please, we beg, side with your neighbors, not with big business. Thank you for your time.
Next up, Robin Cochan. You want to wait till the end?
I do.
Okay, that's fine. All right, next up, Dan Eustace. I have another slip-up for Dan L. Eustace, or I don't know if it's L or C, but the one that lives at Yeager Road. Him first. Okay.
Good evening, County Council. I'm here as a concerned citizen of Luzerne County to urge council to vote yes on the resolution for all the right reasons as stated in the resolution and for the generations to come. It's not us, that we're worried about us a little bit, but the biggest problem is the generations to come and what they're going to have to put up with. I live very close, well, not very close, probably less than 100 yards from an electric, from a PPL line. And the electromagn, as one person stated, electromagnetic field extends 250 yards from the center. So if you figure that's from the center to the right, it's also from the center to the left, 500 yards. And electromagnetic fields have been known to cause cancer. Three years ago, my wife was diagnosed with cancer. Thank God, three years later, with chemo and radiation, she's clear of that. But that needs to be taken into consideration. We do need to rescind the LERTAs issued until PPL agrees to the alternate route. And if you want to do something to give incentives, they're, as it's been said, they're billionaires. You know, it's a billion-dollar service. Want to do something? Why don't we give incentives to the residents? If you're going to make that money, and they're going to pay it to the council, or to the county, then give some back to the residents. The other thing is, these things need to be put in the right places. We need to issue the moratorium on all LERTAs until PPL adopts the alternate route of the 12-mile 500 KV line. Again, we understand that there are better ways, but it has to come down. County council was voted in to protect the citizens' quality of life in this county, not PPL, not these other services. It's to protect the county, the citizens of this county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Dan Eustace from Lakeview Drive. He said he was going to wait until the end. Okay. Next up, Jennifer Yanni. She's also going to wait until the end. Okay. Anna Venatieri.
Good evening. My name is Anna Venatieri, Sugarloaf Township. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but then I heard the letter from PPL and I was compelled to. So it's their fault. I just want to talk about a little, I'd like to rebut a little bit of what they put in that letter. So a lot of people think that this is a lot of angry citizens having the NIMBY mindset, not in my backyard. But it's a lot more than that for a lot of reasons. But one of them is, one of the claims that PPL continues to make is that there's this massive, PJM is projecting these massive needs, we have to upgrade the grid. If we don't, everything's going to crash and burn, you know, our future is at stake as humanity. But I'd like to posit something a little different tonight for your consideration. Does PA need the electricity? No. Pennsylvania has so much excess electricity that our state has been the largest exporter of electricity every year since 2007. That's pretty significant. They didn't put that in the letter. Pennsylvania's electricity exports are enough to meet the import needs of New Jersey, Delaware, Maryland, Ohio, and DC, and still have some excess power for part of Virginia, which is the nation's largest electricity importer right now, which is interesting because they're turning into data center alley. But they don't have the resources that we have. We have water, we have land that the developers want. So just as Pennsylvania has long been the largest importer of trash, our state's role as the nation's largest electricity exporter means that Pennsylvania communities get polluted for the benefit of other states. It's time for other states to take more responsibility for themselves. PPL, which is, of course, as you know, one of the largest electric utilities in our state, they expect to see its summer peak load demand jump more than 60% in the next five years by 2030. The amount of excess electricity Pennsylvania already exports, and I got numbers for anyone who's a numbers cruncher, 83.4 million megawatts in 2023, is already more than that amount PPL says it's needed for by 2030, which would be 83.2 million. So that's a deficit. Even if we accept, like, so there's a difference. We're exporting more than we need. So if we expect, accept the massive expansion of data centers and speculative energy-wasting crypto-mining, or all the different things that are coming right now to the state, there's a lot of them, we already have the capacity for this. We have the capacity for this. And should make neighboring states take care of their own needs so we can use our own power. And that goes for any of the hyperscale build-out, too. They absolutely have every, they have the pockets to create their own power sources, and they don't want to do it. And PPL wants a cut of it. I get it. They're business people. Who isn't? But I'd just like you to take those things into consideration. We've been the largest exporter of electricity, end over end, since 2007. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience for public comment? Mr. Walsh?
Jamie Walsh, Ross Township. Just wanted to give you all an update. The Office of Consumer Advocacy will be here September 16th. I told you we didn't have a location. We do now. It'll be at Hazleton High School at 5:30 PM regarding this power line. I share our community's concern. Tomorrow, I'm going on a tour of Data Center Alley. These are just some of the 600 data center sites in the entire state. There are 600 data centers across the state of Virginia, or the Commonwealth of Virginia. There's 141 specifically in one community, Ashburn, Virginia, that we will be touring tomorrow. These are just some of the, some of the highlighted areas we're going to be visiting. Sully Highland Park, it's an AWS data center with over 100 diesel generators permitted as their backup power. This is the typical amount for facilities of this size. There are over 9,000 diesel generators permitted in Virginia at this point. I'm going to skip to the next one. AOL Headquarters, original AOL Headquarters, used to have 5,000 employees at its peak, demolished and replaced with powerhouse data centers, less than 150 employees. So don't give me this creates a whole bunch of jobs. Tippets Hill Cemetery that was preserved by Vantage. They had to preserve a cemetery in order to build data centers all around it. I will be having video and photos of that when we come back. Loudon Gateway Metro has the lowest ridership on metro. It's been surrounded by data centers because they were allowed by right in the mixed-use development zone. Hampshire Park, Washington and Old Dominion Trail behind the parking lot, you can see the AWS data center and diesel generators from there. Now, Loudon County Parkway, huge data centers on both sides. Potomac Energy Park Drive is near Leesburg, Virginia, but goes under the dual 500 KV lines, which are due to be expanded by more 500 KV lines and connected to the other 500 KV lines to create a loop, which will go around the data center alley as well. Much more energy infrastructure is coming to power all this. These are in court, by the way, right now. Google Data Center is a heavy-water user in their 15 largest-consuming data centers in the state. And Potomac Energy is a peaking gas plant, 780 megawatts, that has been bought up by Blackstone, which also owns QTS, which is a data center developer. This is what we're concerned about, Sugarloaf, becoming. And it's right in front of us. I mean, it is happening. The first data center was put in Loudon County in 1999. Now there's well over 150 in the whole county. And I don't know that that's the future that we want to look at every single day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Anybody else in the audience for public comment? I have two hands up on the Zoom. Ashley Bart.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Yes, thank you. My name is Ashley Bart. I am in Hazleton and have family property in Sugarloaf that is directly impacted by the transmission line. I think a lot of what I would have spoken to has already been commented on this evening, so I thank my fellow residents and neighbors for that. I am just supporting the request to, for you all to vote yes on the resolution to place the moratorium on the LERTAs and to suspend the construction of the transmission line. I think if you were to look, you know, kind of to echo a bit on some of the comments tonight and to speak to the email from the PPL representative, you know, she mentioned in there that the old right-of-way was for a 69-kilovolt line. Well, this is a 500-kilovolt line, which is more than seven times the size of the old one. And there have been many homes, many new homes constructed along that property since that was first used. So I think, you know, John Zola had mentioned this, but that, that right-of-way is not built for an industrial line of this size. And the people that have spent their life's earnings to build homes there and create families there should not have to be impacted by them so much for this. Also, there are the studies that the EMFs are, you know, basically measured up to 250 yards. If you go and stand on that line, there's homes, I mean, some people are saying this line is like 30 feet from their bedroom or 100 feet from their living room. And so I can't even imagine what the volume of EMFs are in that. And I don't think it's anything that anyone should have to just be dropped on them so irresponsibly by PPL, who doesn't want to take the time to look for a better alternative for people. They're only looking out for their interests. I also think that we need, as a county as a whole, to really look at, as I've been attending these meetings and gathering more information, there are a lot of concerning developments, like major developments happening in Hazel Township, of course, this project in Sugarloaf, probably more in the greater Wokesbury area. And it's concerning that where do all of these major, major developers, like, there's about 40 to 50 buildings being proposed in the planning, in the plans right now, planning department right now in Hazel Township. That is concerning from a resource perspective. And I just question if anyone is really looking at all of the projects across the entire county and where are these resources going to come 10, 15 years on the line?
Thank you. Okay. Next up, Mr. Rayball.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Rayball of Hazleton speaking. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to stand in solidarity with my neighbors in Sugarloaf Township, Black Creek Township, and my fellow resident in Hazleton for the approval of this resolution to put a moratorium on the LERTAs. I would agree with every commenter from the southern end of Luzerne County, my fellow neighbors and county citizens. I would just like to bring a perspective of somebody who served on a utility board, from somebody who served on the County Redevelopment Authority Board, and somebody who is certified... somebody who served on the county redevelopment authority board, and somebody who is certified as a operator of heavy equipment, especially specifically horizontal directional drills that are being used in the Great Lakes region of our country and the southeast corridor of our country to place these high transmission lines underground instead of above ground, which would greatly and negatively impact the quality of life and the land, private, private property of residents and citizens. And for PPL to say what they said, they contradicted themselves, Mr. Chair, and members of council and county manager, Kokomo and administration officials, because how is it, if they're going to use the existing corridor, then why would they even need to use eminent domain and seize private property in order to put in those new lines? If they're going to use the existing corridor, then they would, then they wouldn't need to use eminent domain. That's number one contradiction. Number two, Mr. Chair and members of council, how is it that they're going to, if they're not going to use eminent domain, okay, in terms of putting in these new lines, then, you know, why would they, if they're going to use eminent domain, then how are they going to, how are they going to address the situation when it comes to blighted areas according to the LURDA? Because as you know, Mr. Chair and members of council, manager, Kokomo, administration officials, that eminent domain has to be, in terms of using a LURDA, it has to go through blighted areas. Which blighted areas have been certified, have been identified and certified as blighted areas? That's, that's a major issue. Because if there are no blighted areas that have been certified, legally certified and identified, then guess what? Those land, private property owners have a major case specifically, and I would direct the attention of the Office of Law, Mr. Skeen and the other solicitors, to Kilo, the landmark U.S. Supreme Court case, Kilo versus City of New London, 2005.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rayball.
As you know, Mr. Chair, that, that needs to-
Okay. Anybody else for public comment? All right, hearing done, we'll move on to the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the August 12, 2025 voting session?
So moved.
Uh, okay. Mr. Thornton was the first, second, Mr. Wilovich. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Minutes are approved. Number one, motion to adopt the ordinance adopting the 2026 Long Range Operational Fiscal and Capital Plan for Luzerne County.
So moved.
Motion and a second.
Just one quick question for management, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Haas.
Um, Mr. Kokomo, is there an order of preference or priority for these projects? It seems like it's just all, this is what we want, to know if there was any particular order.
We didn't prioritize them, but we can, if you want.
I don't want to handicap the management by, you know, putting money where we need to put it, but I just want to know if there was anything that was really like a driving force as far as capital, capital improvements go.
There are some, of course, that we'll probably have to do sooner than others, but, but we didn't prioritize. They're not in order of preference.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Motion and a second, roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Number two, motion to adopt the ordinance for the bond refinancing.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Just for the public's edification, the refinancing of these bonds is projected to save the county over the next several years between three and $4 million. So it's a tremendous bonus for the county residents. Just wanted to let everybody know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton. Any other comments? Motion, uh, Ms. Smith?
Thank you. I, looking at this after the week last week, or last meeting, I do think that we've done this inappropriately and incorrectly.
No, we haven't, but okay.
Most importantly, the fact that we're borrowing money with these. I think that's the reason, just making my record.
Go on. We, we have not done anything inappropriately as far as procedure is concerned. Ms. Manager Kokomo, would you like to respond to that?
Yes. The charter is clear. Obviously, council could have introduced this ordinance, but the charter is clear. And it explicitly gives a very specific list, including ordinances that relate to fiscal responsibility. They give that option to the county manager to introduce. And that's the way that we did it. And if you look at the policy reasons behind it, whoever added that language into the charter was very forward-thinking. The administration is the government unit that deals with the day-to-day operations, and that includes reviewing our fiscal plans, our capital plans, any kind of budgetary plan. And by giving the county manager the authority to introduce the ordinance, allows us to actually circumvent any kind of political maneuverings that might take place when elected officials are dealing with very significant issues such as refinancing. Not saying that this particular council would do it, but just remember when this charter was written, the situation that we were in. So allowing, the language is clear and unequivocal. The county manager has the authority to introduce that ordinance.
And more importantly, we're approving it. Council is obviously the ultimate authority on these issues, and we're the ones approving it. So how it gets introduced, to me, is personally unimportant. And number two, it does follow the guidelines of the charter. You have any other comments?
I just wanted to know why it was never done that way in the past. Because I went back and I looked at the votes. Why is this the first time like this?
It could have been, but we want to get, we want to maximize the interest rates right now, and we want to get this done in a very efficient manner. And that's, that's the reason why it was done that way. There's no prohibition. It could have been done with council introducing it, but the county manager also has the authority to do it.
I just don't like that it's never been done this way. And-
There's a lot of things that have, that we have changed. The answer that it's always been done that way, that's the wrong answer. I don't allow, I don't allow my department or division heads to say that. When they come in and we ask them why, and they say, "We've always done it that way," I tell them-
I'm just curious to why-
-that is the wrong answer.
It's being changed right now.
All right, okay. Is that the end of your comment, Ms. Smith?
The end of my comment is this.
Okay.
Well, I certainly agree with Madam County Manager in most of the time. I do believe that there are partial times that we, there are other times that we need to look at why it was done that way and why it's changing right now. I'm just interested in an answer. Doesn't mean that I'm not in agreement with the borrowing. I just wanted the answer. That's all. But we can move on.
All right, Mr. Haas.
Making my record. Thank you.
Yeah, I think there's broad consensus about the borrowing. And I understand my, my colleagues, where she's coming from. But I, I want to know specifically about the transaction fees. Ms. Manager, can you speak to that? Because we're looking at, at a very nice windfall with this reconfig-
Ryan, are you here?
Yeah, remind her.
As of this morning, rates have actually been moving in your favor. Estimated gross savings as of today are currently $3.47 million for the county. The estimated cost of issuance are 0.9% of about $500,000, give or take. And that is, but your savings of that 3.47 is net of all savings. To put that in perspective of your last borrowings, in 2017, your borrowing costs were 1.98%, and in 2015, they were 1.5%. So when you look at the transaction fees on this, they're significantly less than they happened in the past.
But what's the exact dollar amount on that? Could you-
551,000.
551,000.
On, it's over 50, it's 58.6 million.
Because I, I agree with you. The rates are, look like they're, we got, the wind to our backs. It looks very favorable. And there's going to be a Fed adjustment, a rate adjustment, September 16th, 17th, which I'm, if I'm looking at the market, it looks like it's still going to go down. So I think we might even see that number increase about the wind. I mean, I support this, all right, Mr. Chair, but just look at what our exposure is for that.
Absolutely hope they do.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other remarks? All right, motion and a second, roll call.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. Lombardo?
Yes. Great job, administration.
10 to 1, it passes.
All right, number three, motion to adopt the resolution modifying the lease with Can Do Community Foundation for County-owned Lands in Butler Township.
No.
All right, there, motion and a second.
Who's?
Uh, I, Ms. Krishnowski, I think was first.
The second was?
Oh, it was, yes. And then, um-
Great.
Yeah, Mr. Wilovich.
Okay.
Motion and a second, roll call.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number four, motion to adopt the resolution modifying the lease with the United States Government for property located on Route 11 Wyoming Ave, Wyoming Borough.
I make the motion.
Motion and a second, roll call.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number five, motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a lease renewal agreement between Luzerne County and Domfort Enterprises Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Sorry, which one did we delete out?
We deleted number five. So this is the new number five. There's a motion and a second, roll call.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number six, motion to adopt the resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project for the Dallas Area Fall Fair Incorporated.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number seven, motion to adopt the resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project Luzerne County Library Systems.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number eight, motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the county manager to co, to co-sponsor a TASSA grant application with Anthracite Scenic Trails Association.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number seven, motion to adopt the resolution setting forth non-binding parameters for business entities applying for LURDA status.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Another question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Thornton.
Yeah, I was reviewing the schedule today, and I just want to say there are probably some deep economic ramifications to this. We've stated them in the past. We've had lengthy, lengthy discussions on LURDA's, the value of them, the importance of them for economic development, how much it increases tax revenue in future years to the county. This, a couple of effects will, will fall out of this if it passes. One is, industry and developers around the country take note of these kind of votes. Whereas in the past, corporations would readily come to Luzerne County requesting a LURDA after they requested from the local municipality and the school district, then they come to us, then we consider the LURDA. And by the way, just for everybody's knowledge, LURDA's, according to, someone stated it earlier, it might have been Mr. Haas, the, the state law on LURDA says they can only be granted for environmentally compromised land, blighted land. Can't, we, we can't grant a LURDA. It's inappropriate. Maybe illegal if we gave a LURDA for a development on pristine rural land. So according to state law, that's not supposed to happen. So when news gets out that we're developing a more inhibitive schedule for developers, many times, they won't even seek a LURDA here in the, in the county. They'll just simply go south of us, Carvin County, Skoko County, or they'll go north of us, Lackawanna County. That pretty much gives out LURDA's to any kind of development up there all the time as their regular policy. So I'm concerned about that. This could have far-reaching effects far, far in the future, 20, 30, 40 years from now. Secondly, when we discourage LURDA's, we're discouraging developers from coming here and going elsewhere. That's simple fact. That equates to, in the future, we won't get those great increased tax revenues from those corporations. We'll simply continue getting the little pittance of taxes on that land that's undeveloped, undeveloped scarred land, environmentally compromised land, land that-
Whereas in the past, corporations would readily come to Luzerne County requesting a LERTA after they requested from the local municipality and the school district. Then they come to us, then we consider the LERTA. And by the way, just for everybody's knowledge, LERTAs, according to, uh, someone stated it earlier, it might have been Mr. Haas. The, the state law on LERTA says they can only be granted for envi- environmentally compromised land, blighted land, can't, we, we can't grant a LERTA, it's inappropriate. Maybe illegal if we gave a LERTA for a, a development on pristine rural land. So according to state law, that's not supposed to happen. So when news gets out that we're developing a more inhibitive, uh, schedule for developers, many times, they won't even seek a LERTA here in, in the county. They'll just simply go south of us, Carvin County, Skoko County, or they'll go north of us, Laquanica County, that pretty much gives out LERTAs to any kind of development up there all the time as their regular policy. So I'm concerned about that, this could have far-reaching effects far, far in the future, twenty, thirty, forty years from now. Uh, secondly, when we discourage LERTAs, we're discouraging developers from coming here and going elsewhere, that's simple fact. That equates to in the future, we won't get those great increased tax revenues from those corporations. We'll simply continue getting the little pittance of taxes on that land that's undeveloped, undeveloped scarred land, environmentally compromised land, uh, land that nobody ever wants to build on because it's so expensive to remediate the soils. So that's why they don't, that's why our lands around here have been sitting in Luzerne County since the fifties, when the mine companies closed up. And they left their column banks and their coal fields and slag, and no one's developing it because it costs a couple of million dollars before you even start developing the project, just to remediate the soil. So when we grant a LERTA, over the next five, ten years actually, the revenue that come into the coffers here at the county increased dramatically every year, every year. Till the tenth and final year, sometimes the eighth and, eighth and ninth, the tenth year, where we get enormous amounts of revenue coming from big businesses and big corporations. That reduces the pressure on the then sitting councils to raise taxes on the mom and pops and, and the regular folks in this county. I hate to take any kind of measures, or employee measures, that's going to cause me, if I was here, or future council, to increase taxes on the residents when we could have got it off the corporations. But we kind of pushed them away, we didn't want them here, and we did that with a, a prohibitive schedule like this. So I'm very concerned with the message this sends, oh, and not to mention, um, S and P is the rating agency around the country, they issue ratings not just on yourselves individually, uh, credit ratings, businesses, they give credit ratings. They have a credit rating for the county. Obviously, the higher our, our credit rating, the better position we are as a county, and, and for many financial reasons. We don't want to take steps that could actually make them lower our rating. That's, that's detrimental to the county, um, many cases, it causes tax increases to the people. And I would hate for that to happen here. Anything that's perceived by S and P as a negative or detrimental, uh, item to development or future prosperity or economic growth could result, combined with other things, if you're taking other matters that are considered, uh, inhibitive of future growth in the county, that has the effect of lowering our credit rating. So that, that I'm concerned about, too. The last thing I'm concerned about is the schedule is different for warehousing and logistics development. And whereas warehousing used to get a really bad name because they were not good paying jobs, today's world, since COVID, warehousing is paying twenty to twenty-two bucks an hour, forty to forty-four thousand dollars a year, a livable wage, that, you're not going to be very wealthy or, or that. But I don't like that it's a five-year limited schedule, uh, much harder tax break, or very little tax break for those companies. There's a per acre development fee of five thousand per acre, whereas the other guys that come here for manufacturing or tech-based development, they're going to only pay twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, per acre, say, for manufacturing. I don't like when any government body at the federal level, or state level, or local level, is picking winners and losers. The government should not be picking winners and losers of who they think should be successful, whether that's the United States Government, state government of Pennsylvania, or the county government. I just think that's a bad practice when we start sticking our nose and our feet in there and thinking we know better of what's best and what's going to really take off in this county. So for those reasons, um, I'm, I'm opposed to this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton, just to add to those comments, um, I know I, I've brought this example up numerous times in this discussion about the LERTA schedule. One of the few school districts in all of Luzerne County that has not had to raise taxes over the course of the last five years is the school district I live in, Pittston area School District. And that's because our largest taxpayer in Luzerne County owns property and has facilities, buildings, logistics facilities, uh, tech-based development facilities on mine scarred land in the greater Pittston area, uh, that's, uh, Mr. Rob Miracle. And not only is he the largest taxpayer in the county, but he's also responsible for helping save the entire west side of the Wyoming Valley during the flood of two thousand and eleven. So we have developers like that, that are local, that love this area and want to invest in our people. And now, school districts like Pittston area, who have given out tax abatements, which at the time were called K O Zs, are now reaping those benefits, while most others in this county are having to raise taxes every single year. Just across the river in the Wyoming area School District, they've had to raise taxes, uh, how many, how many times, Mr. Thornton?
Probably about twelve years in a row.
Right, and it's past the index every single time. And, and just to echo some, out some of the other things Mr. Thornton said, this certainly, I think, will chase development out of this county. And I know that there are a lot of people in the audience who are concerned about, um, the way that some of these tax abatements have gone on, and, and I certainly understand what you're saying. But even in this schedule, a warehouse or a data center would receive the best tax abatement. And for us not to be able to individually negotiate on these things will end up being worse for us, because the development will not come to the area, we will not be able to provide, uh, tax relief to residents. And we won't be able to also negotiate with them on other issues, too. We could say, hey, you know, if you're coming to this area, maybe the fire department in your town, uh, could get a new fire truck off of you. We could certainly negotiate those types of things, that's happened before. So I, I don't support this, and, uh, this, again, this is not necessarily related to the power line issue, um, I don't think they're mutually exclusive. And, you know, we, we don't want to be stopping development from coming into Luzerne County, because it'll end up being a detriment to everybody here. Ms. Stevenson?
Um, I, I do have some reservation, a few months back when this originally came up, I supported Councilman Sabatino in introducing this LERTA schedule. Councilman Thornton made some very valid points that we, we went back, we did some research, um, I absolutely agreed with. This is the same LERTA schedule that was presented several months ago, which means we did not learn over the last two months, we did not make any adjustments, we did not make any changes to this schedule, um, which I don't support. Uh, we, we knew and we understood that, um, setting up the LERTA schedule the way it is presently wasn't quite fit for the county, um, we didn't get to revise that. So, um, that is the main reason why I don't think I can support this moving forward. I was hoping to see something change, some differences in, in either how we structure that percentage-wise, um, how we tailor that to manufacturers or whoever, depending on those categories. But, yeah, I'm just putting that out there for the record.
Mr. Sabatino?
I would, uh, like to make a motion to refer it back to the committee to rework it and bring the changes that we've learned need to be made for, you know, future consideration.
Can we just make that amendment for tonight, Mr. Sabatino, or we just make it here?
Well, I'd rather, rather not do it here.
Right, I'd rather not do it on the floor.
Right. I'd rather not do it here, I'd rather refer it back to the infrastructure committee and let us do our due diligence on it.
I second that.
All right.
Is that a table?
It's tabled already.
Yeah, it's-
We never removed it from being tabled.
Oh.
Okay, so there is a motion to refer it back to committee. All right, motion and a second, roll call.
Yes, I'll rescind my second and refer it back to the committee.
No, I don't want to rescind mine.
Okay. Okay.
But wait, mine needs, okay, is there a second for my original motion at this point, point of order?
No, no, that was for Mr. Sabatino. So is there a second for Mr. Haas's original motion on the LERTA schedule? All right, motion fails for lack of a second. Okay, it'll be referred back to committee. Yep, roll call.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
This is a gross lack of leadership that we're showing here, we did this two months ago, and the, the public's here tonight even with very related issues, and we're kicking the can. No.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
I believe we are exemplifying great leadership by taking this back to the table to figure out how to do it properly. I would appreciate the fact for us not making that mistake moving forward, so, yes.
Mr. Thornton?
I agree wholeheartedly with Ms. Stevenson, I think this is the prudent thing to do, uh, I vote, yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Ten to one, go to the committee.
Number eleven, motion to adopt the resolution encouraging PPL to pursue alternatives in its installation of lines for Sugarloaf Transmission Product in order to, project in order to maintain the quality of life for Luzerne County residents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Is it, another question?
Go ahead, Mr. Thornton.
Yeah, just, uh, a few things on this resolution I want to comment on, um, and my comments should not be taken that I'm in favor of PPL, or I'm supporting them, or taken that I'm admonishing them or criticizing them. So neither one of those. My big concern for speaking right now is that this resolution is putting the cart way, way, way ahead of the horse. The, the proposed project is not scheduled to begin till next year. In the meantime, the normal procedure in any kind of proposal like this by a utility company is to first hear all the public comments from the public, at the Public Utility Commission's hearings, the P U C. This is why the P U C was set up a long, long time ago, so that utility companies can't just shove this down the public's throat, like they used to. Me personally, would I want anything like this with these towers going through my land? Absolutely not, never. That, that, that's just a horrible, horrible thing to consider. However, we have a method in place, methodology, P U C, and, um, the D E P, they have to weigh in, they have to weigh in on this. Uh, there are some, uh, pretty, uh, severe allegations here in this resolution, such as like toxic herbicides are going to put the children and grandchildren at serious risk. Well, that could be true, and I want to hear that, I want to hear that from D E P, or the P U C. I do want to hear the truth, if they'll tell me, and, you know, I didn't fall off the turnip truck yesterday. If I feel they're lying about everything, when they've had their opportunity to speak, I think that's absolutely the time to go after them and, and, and just call them out on it, what they're lying about. The other thing, the other reason I think it should be put off, I don't care if it's two weeks from now, or four weeks from now, or whatever, council is meeting individually and privately with P P and L representatives in the next week. We're all going to sit down privately in small groups, and we can ask them a thousand questions and sit there and assess, are they B S N S, or do we think they're telling the truth? And I think maybe we should sit down and wait for them to speak and answer our many, many questions. Every council person here, I'm sure, has a bunch of questions, I know I do, for P P and L. I, I just think, uh, we, we, we need to follow the normal procedure, P U C, D E P hearings, um, and our private meetings with P P and L next week. Wouldn't that be, make sense, wouldn't that be prudent? So, and the other thing I do want to state here, I heard a lot of public comment, much of it of great value, but some of it was just a little off. I heard several people at the podium speak that, uh, they're encouraging council to pass this resolution tonight, which opposes this new transmission line. This resolution does not oppose the transmission line, I don't know if you people read it. The paragraph of importance is the last one, where it says Luzerne County Council encourages P P and L to listen to the concerns of the residents. So, of course, we all feel that they should li- listen to us, what we have to say, I mean, I have a lot to say to them, I know they're going to listen to me, they may not follow what I'm saying, but at least they're going to hear me. And I think they should hear every one of you and everyone else in those townships down there that are affected. So I just wanted to make that known here. Couple other things that I heard tonight, just to clarify the record, someone stated, they never had an opportunity to weigh in and listen about those past LERTAs that we granted. Well, that, that's just simply not true. Every LERTA we granted was individually done with multiple public meetings, at, at a minimum two public meetings, but some of them three and four public meetings, with a lot of public discussion. So we don't do things, uh, non-transparately here, we advertise these things, we advertise these agendas, everyone in the public knows what we're going to discuss. So th- that I wasn't buying, that we kind of pulled the wool over the public's eyes, would pass LERTAs. I, I mentioned this with the other resolution, LERTAs can only be granted for compromised and blighted lands. We can't give LERTAs on a nice gorgeous farm anywhere, i- it's just not allowed, so I just want to make sure everybody understands that. The moratorium issue came up several times tonight, that's not even on the agenda tonight, you're allowed to talk about it.
It's on, it's on the work session.
It's on the work session, but people were saying tonight, I encourage you to vote for the moratorium. Well, we may, in the future, but not tonight, that's not on the voting agenda, I don't know, a lot of people, I think, were kind of misunderstood that we're voting on a moratorium tonight, that's not part of this at all. So those are some of the things I just wanted to clarify, and if we are going to pass this resolution, which says, again, council encourages P P and L to listen to the concerns of residents and consider alternatives to the blah, 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 with all the alternatives listed after that, um, that's, that's fine by me. Uh, the one thing I would like to clarify, Mr. Chairman, we want to make sure this is factual, and the second whereas, where it says the, re- it reads, the proposed transmission line will run through land that is not rural, but rather populated with homes and families. The, the fact of the matter is, that land is rural, and that's not my opinion, factually, uh, according to state numbers, state statistics and their requirements, it's not only rural, it's very rural. The state requirement to be classified as a rural township is, uh, two hu- two hundred and ninety-one people per square mile, and two hu- two hundred and ninety-one or less. Sugarloaf is a hundred and seventy-five per square mile, and Black Creek is seventy people per square mile, so well, well within the rural. So I, I'm not comfortable voting in favor of this, because it, it's truly not a rural, I'd rather it read something, and I can make an amendment if you wish, uh, I'd rather it read the proposed transmission line will run through land that is populated with homes and families. And that's, that's what I, I think would be more factual. So if I can, um, I make that motion to make that amendment, to read like that.
There's a motion and a second on the amendment.
If there's any questions.
Any questions on that, or is, all right, roll call on the amendment.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Uh, yes.
Unanimous.
All right.
And thank you, and thank you for the amendment, and could I continue with one other, uh, amendment?
Go ahead, Mr. Thornton.
In light of my comments about, I'd really like to see us encourage the public to pursue this matter and attend the P U C meetings and the D E P meetings, um, and follow that process. And at the end of all of that, everyone then could still say whatever they want to say to P P and L. I think jumping the gun on this is, is just premature, again, they're not starting construction till next year, and I, I, I think we, we could do this two weeks from now, or four weeks from now. But, um, I'd like to see, uh, if I can, offer an amendment, and hopefully it passes, I'd like to add one whereas clause and change the now therefore clause, if that's okay, and I'll read it out loud, if that's all right.
Okay.
So all the whereas clauses that are there now on the, uh, resolution would stay the same, and then there'd be one more whereas clause right after that. And then I would like to replace the now therefore clause.
So you're adding a whereas and then replacing the now therefore, can you read your language?
Yeah, no, read the language, so the whereas clause would read, whereas concerns have been raised by residents regarding PPL's placement of a new electrical line, it is essential to recognize that the appropriate channels for addressing these allegations are through the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission- are through the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission, PUC, and the Department of Environmental Protection, the DEP." Period. And then the now therefore clause, the one that's there now is not bad, but I think it's more appropriate to say...
All right, we're going to do one at a time.
Okay, so that's my amendment.
Can we add that whereas? Well, how about this, read your now therefore clause as well, and then we'll do them one at a time.
And then the now therefore amendment that I would offer, "Now therefore, be resolved that residents are encouraged to formally present their objections and concerns to the PUC and DEP as these bodies serve as the proper forums for evaluating and responding to such challenges. Engaging with these agencies ensures that residents' voices are heard within the established regulatory framework, allowing for a thorough and fair examination of the issues at hand."
Okay, we'll start with your first whereas clause.
That's a separate amendment.
That's going to be the first one.
Okay, I make a motion for that whereas amendment.
Okay. Can you read it again?
"Whereas concerns have been raised by residents regarding PPL's placement of a new electrical line, it is essential to recognize that the appropriate channels for addressing these allegations are through the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission and the Department of Environmental Protection."
Okay. Mr. Thornton proposed an amendment. Is there a second on the amendment?
Second.
On the proposal, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Haas.
Both amendments, if I could speak about both concurrently, both of them essentially make this moot because obviously the PUC is there to field such requests. Without having these, and it gets concurrent with the schedule for the LERTA, it's concurrent with the moratorium coming up in the work session. You understand, PPL would not have come to the table to even want to meet with us beforehand if it weren't for these. Public life, everybody has a lot of theater. I'm sure you know. So, if we just center hands and let the appropriate common channels go through, it's in the bag. It's 95% done, the PUC. Okay, I just want, I hope it is very clear about this. So when you change that, yes, those are the channels. But we are encouraging PPL before it gets to that point to truly listen to concerns of the people, to examine not the bottom line per se, but the quality of life in our neck of the woods here in Pennsylvania. This is a very special place. I feel like we have these same debates every time, so I feel the need to address them. Representative Walsh brought about Northern Virginia. I lived in Northern Virginia. I lived there. It was a beautiful place. I still like Northern Virginia, but now it is a much more congested, not rural place whatsoever, even if it's with the national designation rural place. We know that 100% of counties in New Jersey are designated urban counties, even though if you've been to Western New Jersey, it's rural. Okay, so it's a numbers thing. Things like this are meant to confuse the original point of this, which is to have PPL listen to our people, to listen to us, listen to the council. We are tasked with representing the people and preserving the quality of life here to the best way possible. I'm not opposed to development. I'm on the record for that. I don't think anybody here is opposed to development. But we want a real dialogue. We don't want breadcrumbs after the meal is all taken over. And that's what these people are concerned with here tonight. They're worried about getting the crumbs. They brought up very legitimate arguments. When you look at something like this, PPL is, it's a for-profit company. Now, it has different designations because it serves the public as a utility, but it is for profit. PPL makes money not by making electricity. They make it by transmitting and transferring energy. So, of course, they're going to want to build more lines. That's just good business practice. If you want to sell more lemonade, you make, you pick more lemons and you sell it, and you make a profit. So, something like this gets them to, it doesn't get them anything. It's a suggestion. It's an encouragement. All right, this really has no teeth. However, I really believe it did get us this far with a potential dialogue and with these people here. As this is written, this doesn't take a stance one way or the other as far as the appropriate channels with the PUC or the protocols. Has nothing to do with that. What it has to do with is having PPL be very forthright, forthright as possible, with everybody to fact them, not just Councilman Thornton, everybody, because that's what we deserve here in northeastern Pennsylvania. I just hope you understand what's at stake. This is so much more than just a power line. This is a whole way of life here that you heard in the presentation that I wasn't here for, the plan for our area is to become an industrial zone. Especially, it's going to start with South County. It's going to start with you, you all that are here tonight. Your kids will not have, your grandkids will not have the same life here. It'll look like Northern Virginia. It'll look like New Jersey. That is what we're tasked with here. I'm a Republican. I'm very conservative individual. I believe in free enterprise. And we're not putting our foot on the scales. It's my, that's my line. But the LERTAs, we are putting ourselves in the driver's seat and not big business with, with everything you just, you all just said no to with the LERTA schedule. We talked about that. We ran around that for two months. You said no, and we're going to kick it back to the committee, and we're going to sit around and talk about it for hours. You could have done it tonight. But we're going to wait, and it's buying time for the entities that don't have the same perspective that we do, where people in this crowd do. Please support this. Let's just call the question and move it without any amendment. Let's move it. Thank you.
All right, Ms. McDermott.
Okay, I, other council members have done this before, where you bring an amendment, a big, long amendment, at the last second, and you have a copy there. Why couldn't you have handed a copy to us before? So I have a hard time trying to, I hear what you're saying, but I like to read it and understand it. So, you didn't give us a copy of it, so I have a hard time, you know, saying yes to the amendment. I have no problem with the resolution. Again, it encourages council. It encourages PPL, but again, non-binding. It encourages. So, I have a hard time just trying to vote on an amendment that was just thrown at us.
Uh, Mr. Lescavage and then Mr. Thornton.
What I have a problem with is we get these resolutions and all these things, and then what happens is they're always done before all the facts are out, and it's rather irritating. We're all going to meet with PPL. We're going to sit down. We have questions. We heard a lot of things here tonight. We heard a, you know, cancer causing. Well, I, at home, I looked it up. And then the National Cancer Society states that there's no proof of a cat causing cancer. So I, I got to go by what they say. I have to do research, right? If we're responsible all sitting here, we need to dig it out. Now, I'll ask that same question to them, see what their answer is, and I'll say, well, where's that provider from? That's our job here. Also, I heard a comment, "This isn't the poll that was proposed in 1900." Well, no kidding, because most homes didn't have electric in 1900. So I don't think those polls at that time would be suffice for that right away. The other thing too is, we can never blame a corporation for right aways. That's buyer beware when you buy a property. You buy a house, you're, there's an empty lot there. If somebody's buying a house in Luzerne County, I'm going to encourage them, if there's an empty lot sitting next to you, do your research, because myself and Brian in the small little town of West Pittston ran into this, I couldn't tell you how many times in a small town, about somebody opening a junkyard or an excavating business or everything else. And you know what the zoning was? Zoned for it. So I said, "Be glad that he's keeping it nice and neat and doing what he's doing with it and not making it any worse." Because the zoning, because, people don't realize this, in this county, there was a ton of spot zoning that went on in this whole county. Good or bad, it's there, and you got to live with it. So, we got to know all the facts, and I don't think anything should ever be put before us to vote on it, whether it's significant or not, when we don't hear all the facts from both sides. That's our job.
All right, Mr. Thornton, and then I have a comment.
That's fine. Hey, I agree with Mr. Haas. I agree with all your comments. It's great land. We got to protect it. We got to watch over it. I apologize. I typed this up right before the meeting tonight and came down here. I made two copies at home, because my printer is so slow. But anyway, it wasn't I was trying to hide anything from anybody. I'm not changing, I'm keeping every whereas clause in there that's in there. I'm not eliminating anything. I'm adding one more whereas clause, encouraging people to go and talk to PUC, talk at the meetings with the DEP and the PUC. I mean, the opposite of that then is, I don't know if the argument is for the opposite of that, to not, not go to the meetings, not discuss it, not weigh in on it, if that's what everybody wants. Go ahead, do that. I think it's more appropriate to go to those meetings and discuss and see what happens. But that's all I, that's all I'm doing with the whereas clause. The other amendment is for the now therefore. But I just want to clarify, I agree with Mr. Haas, all those points he made.
All right, thank you. So...
Then rescind the amendment.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I wanted to make a comment, and then I'll have Councilman McDermott. So I agree with what Mr. Lescavage said about wanting to have all the facts before we make a decision. However, I will say that I have been for the last two months in contact with a lot of Roberts, the manager of Community Relations for PPL. Talked to her on the phone several times. I've asked her a number of questions about this project. And I specifically asked her several weeks ago to please attend this meeting. I said, "I want to make sure everybody has the opportunity to say what they, what they want to say, and, you know, council members will be able to ask you questions or ask a representative from PPL questions prior to this vote." And they sent us this letter. And I'll be honest with you, it completely enraged me last week when the letter was sent. You know, it answers a few questions, but there are so many more that council members have. There's a ton that the public have raised that are very legitimate. And what made me even more angry was, after receiving the letter, I called Ms. Roberts on Friday, and I have not gotten a return phone call since then. In my last conversation with her, and I'll tell you exactly what she said. That's how angry I am about this. I said to her, you know, "I want to give you an opportunity. I want to give PPL an opportunity to come here and to respond, but you're going to be asked a lot of questions by council. I need you to prepare for that. I know I'm going to have questions for you. I know other council members are going to have a lot of things that they want to say." And essentially, one of the things that she said to me was, "Well, even if you pass this resolution, this project is still going to happen. We're still going to go through with this." It doesn't mean anything. And I said, "Well, what's the point of the phone conversation that you and I have been having for the last two months? What's the point of having all these public meetings?" And it just, it just made me very angry to see how disrespected not only the members of the public are, but us on council who are trying to ask questions, and especially myself as the chair. I'm trying really hard to make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak. Mr. Zoll, I had you here two weeks ago. We gave you about an hour of time to go through some of your concerns. I've heard members of the public several times, and we've come to your house, and, you know, I just wanted to be fair, give PPL that opportunity as well. And this is all they send us, is this stupid letter. So... I, I, I'm aware of that.
Sorry.
No, Ms. Lawrence didn't, she didn't, she didn't turn the timer on, so I'll blame her for that. Sorry, Sharon. I'm sorry. But, I know, so I had to throw her under the bus. But for those reasons, I 100% support this resolution. Mr. Thornton, I agree with the sentiment behind what you're trying to say, but I don't support those amendments, and I don't think that they're going to make a big difference because the members of the public know that they have to go to the PUC. And, you know, I'll certainly be there with you when you go there. You know, we want this line not to be in the place that it is, and I think that there needs to be more conversation about where the alternatives can be. Go ahead, Ms. McDermott.
Thank you. The resolution says Luzerne County Council encourages PPL, so we're not encouraging the people. It's encouraging PPL. That's all I just wanted to state.
All right. Is there, so is there, there's still a motion and a second on the amendments, Mr. Thornton? Mr. Lescavage, you're still okay with your second? Okay. All right. Any other comments on the amendments?
Just one last comment, Mr. Chair. If you're enraged with PPL for being disingenuous and speaking in generalities, we need to apply the same standard to developers who come in here and give us generalities, which they've given us, my fellow committee members on the infrastructure, we got generalities. So, please direct your rage towards an appropriate channel as well. It's the same thing. It's, I know, but it's, just a little fresh. We got to be a little more consistent, and we've really got to do this a little better. But, yeah, call the question.
All right. Question's called. Okay, question's called for the first amendment, the first whereas. Motion and a second, roll call.
You mean the second whereas? We already did the first one, right?
Well, that was a change to two letters. Yeah, the first new whereas clause. This is for the whereas, yes.
So a no vote will say no to the amendment.
Yes.
No.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatina?
No.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Ms. Stevenson?
No.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
No.
Mr. Lombardo?
No. Would you like to make the...
Mr. Chair, I rescind my, I could see where the sentiment's going here. I rescind the, my suggestion for the now therefore for concerns with PUC and DEP.
All right, thank you. There's a motion on the original resolution. Is everybody okay with it as amended? With the orig, that first amendment, not any of these other ones that Mr. Thornton was talking about? Okay, there's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
No, for reasons stated earlier.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatina?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
I really wish that we could accomplish this in a more direct way instead of just encouraging PPL to listen. But I'm still going to vote yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yeah, again, I really wish we put this off for two or four weeks. It wouldn't have harmed anything. But I, since the resolution encourages PPL to listen to the people, I'll vote yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Ten yes, one no passes.
Okay, thank you. Number 12, motion to adopt the resolution submitting a letter of support to the PA Department of Labor and Industry on behalf of Luzerne County Community College's grant application for advanced manufacturing training program.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Just on the question really quick, I just want to clarify, I had this added to the agenda. I know it's going directly onto the voting session, but I happened to run into Mike Nargavage from Luzerne County Community College who runs the workforce development program. He had mentioned that, that, that program applied for, applied for this grant from the PA Department of Labor and Industry, and that there was a deadline for submissions of letters of support. So I wrote the letter very quickly, wrote the resolution, and just said, "I will throw this right on the agenda, and as long as council's okay with it, we'll be, you know, we'll be supportive of it." So, yep. There's a motion and a second. Are any other questions? Roll call.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatina?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. All right. No public comment on non-agenda items. I do have a bunch of slips up here, so if you don't want to speak again, and just let me know. Mr. Griffith?
Evening, counsel. I have an issue with the, and I know the resolution that you just passed on the encouragement. I think the ability for us to change resolutions and stuff on the fly to Ms. McDermott's point is a valid point. The public has an opportunity to speak to a resolution that was on the agenda. When you start making changes to that resolution, I think it's imperative that the public get a chance to see what the complete document is so they can comment again if they need to. The resolution's getting changed on the fly here, and I don't think that's appropriate for council to do that. The issue about approving the ordinance for the learned, the borrowing is a concern that, and I do agree with Manager Crocomal, that that wasn't done in the past, and that's not an excuse for us to do things the way we always done it. And that's obviously an issue for me as well. I don't like to hear that, "Well, that's the way we've always done it," if it wasn't done right. When we drafted the charter, the reason we put that in there was for the separation of power between council and the manager for borrowing. It was specific. We did that for a reason, because the county commissioners put us $500 million in debt before we went home role. So as charter drafters, we decided that we were thinking it was appropriate for council to at least have the opportunity to bring an ordinance for borrowing to the council body and get the four votes first. So that way they knew that was something that they had a reason to borrow on. It wasn't anything more than that. It was just to keep the power in council's hands for borrowing. The ability to say this is a budgetary ordinance is a stretch at best. Are we going to do that with LERTAs? Can they be automatically introduced? That's a budgetary function. Can the manager automatically introduce a LERTA? So I think it's a slippery slope we stand on. I don't have a problem with the ordinance, just to be clear. I think the ability for us to save the money is great, and I applaud the administration for doing that. I just think that when we step, when we step on a slope where we allow... I just think that when we step, when we step on a slope where we allow stretching of an ordinance or stretching of the procedure, I think we get into a gray area where moving down the road, we could have a problem with different people in the manager's position. We don't have that problem with Manager Crocomal and we won't have that, but I want to make sure that we keep our separation of powers for council. Every time you give up a power, you lose it forever. And that power is specific for council because it's a borrowing. If the manager wants to go out and borrow money, clearly you guys have to approve the ordinance, but the ability for council to get four votes first is specific in the charter for borrowing. It says by ordinance. So, I'm glad that you guys passed the ordinance where and gave the 3.4 million. I think that's a great idea to save us the money, but I just think we need to be cognizant of the fact that at some point along the way, we could end up in trouble with allowing these type of things to happen without doing our due diligence on the council side. It's a power of council, not a cow, not power of the, it's not a power of the county manager. So, thank you very much. I appreciate your opportunity to talk.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Manager Crocomal, did you would like to respond to that?
Yes, I would. The actions and the statements of the controller in challenging the county manager's ability to introduce an ordinance for refinancing are not only misguided, but also detrimental to the governance and financial stability of Luzerne County. The Home Rule Charter clearly delineates the responsibilities and authorities of the county manager, particularly regarding financial matters. By attempting to obstruct the ordinance related to debt reissuance, the controller fundamentally misunderstands the charter's provisions, which categorize such actions as integral to the county's fiscal management. I also want to be clear that the county controller may have been on the initial discussion of drafting the charter. He never finished in that position of drafting the charter. The charter explicitly states that proposed ordinances concerning the annual budget and long-range fiscal plan shall be automatically introduced without requiring four affirmative votes. It is indisputable that refinancing debts falls within the scope of fiscal responsibility. To argue otherwise is to undermine the very framework that governs our county's financial operations.
I'm just, I'm concerned that you, we didn't get that same advice to council when she was chief solicitor. And DCD deals, DCD deals will decide. DCD, DCD will decide.
Sit down.
I want to respond to that. The county controller is, is threatening to go to DCD. We will prevail because we are correct in how we did this. But what it will do is postpone the positives of this refinancing. And I tell you every single day that we, you, the taxpayer, lose money because of the actions of the controller, I will report to you every single day. And as a matter of fact, do we know what that might happen if there is a delay in the, in the acceptance by DCD? Ryan, do you have those numbers?
I do.
Okay, would you share them with council?
Sure.
Mr. Griffith, please sit down. Mr. Griffith, please sit down.
I asked the bonding company for that information.
Mr. Griffith, please sit down.
They did not respond.
Just, this is still on, just to give a perspective. Right now, your bonds are outstanding at a 5% interest rate, so you have that ability to refinance them at a lower interest rate. Every day that goes by where you're paying that higher interest rate as opposed to the lower interest rate, you're losing savings. So, right now, estimated based on current rates, everything's staying the same, if you're delayed by a month, you're looking at a loss in net present value savings of $145,000. If you're delayed by two months, that goes up to $200,000. If you're delayed by three months, $320,000 loss. Four months, $440,000 loss. So if there's any delay in this refinancing, right now we're expected to close, we'd like to close for October 10th. Any filing at DCD where there's a challenge there and that gets delayed, every single day, if interest rates remained exactly the same, the county and its taxpayers will lose money.
Alright, thank you. This is, this is not question and answer time for council, this is public comment time. Okay, please, Mr. Thornton, please.
Will Mr. Griffith call me out specifically and I want to answer?
Okay, after, after the members of the public have an opportunity to all have their comments heard, council members can have an opportunity to speak as well. Okay. Andy Sanco.
Andy Sanco, Sugarloaf Township. The organization I oversee is about a $300 million a year organization. What I was able to find on Luzerne County, it's a bit more than $400 million a year. If any of you believe that the county's S&amp;P rating is solely based on large-scale development, I'm happy to have a conversation offline with one or all of you. Perhaps I could be of benefit to all of Luzerne County and help you maintain a solid S&amp;P rating with that large-scale development. I also want to note, I've watched for months, as a man, Anthony Hall, a fully disabled veteran, Gold Star father, he pleaded with this council to fight for a tax break that would allow him to save his home. Anthony Hall is just one individual who fought long and hard to obtain tax relief. Compare that to the billion-dollar industries who are receiving LERTAs from this council with unbelievable ease. Contrast the hardship facing many residents in Luzerne County with the generous tax exclusions, tax exclusions for their profit developers are drawn to. If I were a developer or PPL with deep pockets and dollar signs in my eyes, you bet I'd bring my business to Luzerne County where taxes seem to evaporate, meaning more money for me as the developer or PPNL. Since I'm not, I can only ask this council, when will my family, including my parents living on fixed income and other residents of Luzerne County, when can we expect our tax abatement? If the data and power industries are so eager to build and develop here, use that and leverage. Listen to the people. Secure fiscal security for our county for many years to come. Tonight someone mentioned winners and losers. It was also stated, I don't like picking winners and losers. If you don't immediately act on LERTAs, big business, and PPL as a council, you clearly have picked the winners, big business, and you are sending a very loud and clear message to the losers, the very people you were sworn to protect and serve.
Alright, thank you, sir. Linda Urisch? Okay. Tricia Marnell? Dan Eustace from Lakeview Drive?
My name is Dan Eustace. I am deeply troubled by the push to welcome massive data centers to Pennsylvania. I honestly have never seen this much community involvement and coming together to voice opposition to large-scale development such as data centers, high-voltage power lines, warehouses, and other dangerous industries that threaten our health and happiness. I truly believe that most Pennsylvanians do not want this in our state. These industries would leave a permanent scar on our landscape and environmental destruction that we will be left with forever. Trillion-dollar companies will make massive profits all while receiving tax breaks from the state without any accountability in reporting their spending. I and my fellow Pennsylvanians have numerous concerns. Some of our many concerns regarding data centers and high-voltage power lines include water scarcity, well and aquifer depletion, worsening air quality, noise and light pollution, decreased quality of life, environmental destruction, and loss of quality wildlife habitat, rising electricity costs, essentially taking a property by eminent domain, physical and mental health risks, reduction in property value, and placement of such facilities in non-industrial areas. I ask you to stop and think what, think about what this is all for. Is further advancement in technology and AI actually a good thing? Its effects on youth are generally agreed upon as being negative. For that matter, many of its effects on society in general are negative. This technology is not a necessity to life, but it's a want that is propelled by multi-billion and multi-trillion dollar companies that do not care about the well-being of the residents of Pennsylvania. In a world where we already have issues such as water scarcity, availability of clean energy, worsening air quality, wildlife habitat loss, this would only make things much worse. These industries would forever change our landscape while the rich get richer and it is the people who live here that will suffer. This would be very similar to what the coal industry did to this area many years ago. As a solution, I ask you to consider a few things. I ask you to think about all of us who live here and who will be negatively affected as described above. These projects need to be more slowly evaluated, not fast-tracked. They must remain in industrial areas not close to our homes. Once these industries come in, there will be no turning back. I ask you to listen to all of us in our communities that are coming together to oppose what is happening to our great state of Pennsylvania. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Jennifer Yanni?
Oh, she's good. She was...
Okay. Dan Eustace from Yegoro?
Again, thank you for letting, allowing me to address the council. Members of council, we understand we can't stop data centers from coming here to Pennsylvania, but we ask you to mandate zoning laws so that these are placed in appropriate areas, such as industrial, brown areas, coal strippings, et cetera. Areas that have, you know, been destroyed by coal barons and steel mills and every other thing that has come and gone and left behind messes for us to clean up. This way we'll limit impact on residential and conservation areas. My, my wife's family lives on a farm that has been there for 150 years or more. We're being, Dorance Township, they're planning on, they are working on zoning laws for data centers and trying to exclude them to certain areas. Right now, it doesn't look real good, but council has the power, council has been elected by the people that are here and the people of Luzerne County to protect us, and that's what we're asking for. We're asking for you to protect our backyards, our areas where there's pristine lands, where their people have lived for ages and deserve to continue to live there the way they were. We're not opposed to advancement, we're not opposed to, you know, the other things that improve, you know, tax base for Luzerne County, but all those things have to be done in the right manner. Again, you were sworn by an oath to protect the rights and the quality of life of these residents. If there's any doubt, if you have any doubts of the data centers, let me ask you one question. Data centers, PPNL lines, would you want that in your backyard? Would you want it in your mom's backyard, your brother's backyard, your child's backyard? If you can answer that and say it's okay, that's one thing. I believe that if you all look at that and go with what's in your heart, you would agree. Data centers, PPNL lines need to be put in the places where they belong, not where they disrupt citizens' lives that have been there forever. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Zola?
So this was a long, confusing conversation we had here tonight. I just want to thank the council people who did try to help the people here. I heard a lot of testimony tonight, very heavily weighing in favor of industry and developers, and very little conversation from Mr. Lescavage and Mr. Thornton in regard helping the people. If you think for one minute that we haven't had countless conversations, countless meetings with PPL where they made complete fools out of us, you're mistaken, sadly mistaken. Go on our Facebook page, take a look at the Valley Country Club illustration, it's all videoed. You could watch at least an hour of it. You want to see how they made fools out of us? We have tried every amicable way to resolve this with PPL. They made fools out of us. They don't answer questions, and when you do meet with them next week, open your eyes and you'll see. Boilerplate answers, riddles for answers, nothing will be straightforward. And at the end of the day, it's going in one ear and out the other. They are motionless robots, and you will see that for yourself. Mr. Lescavage, you mentioned...
Mr. Zola, you have to address your comments to the chair. Please don't call out council members individually.
Okay. I'm very sorry, very sorry. I'm very passionate about this. You go online and you find out one area that says there's no health concerns and there's 10 other ones that say there are health concerns. There's always going to be that. There's always going to be one side saying this and one side saying that. So we can't just bring up that one organization says there's no health concerns while there's 10 others that say there are. And when you talk about the right of way, I, I wish that, I, I'm not going to point to people, but I wish the people who were talking tonight would have come out and actually saw what we're looking at here. This is not like buying a property with a right of way. Listen, we knew the poles were there, right? There were small wooden poles. No one in their right mind could have imagined them putting these monsters in our yards and through our valley. And here again, we're not trying to stop them. We just want them to take an alternative route, like refurbishing a line that's already there, along with four or five other reasonable routes that we gave to them. So we're not trying to stop them. I would just like all of you to just kind of look at it for a human aspect and see what we are looking at.
Thank you, Mr. Zola.
Thank you.
Anybody else's public comment in the audience? Go ahead, ma'am.
I can try to make some short moves. Forgive me, I'm an old widow, farm wife.
Can you just say your name and municipality again? I apologize.
My name's Brenda Rizzo from Black Creek Township. As Mr. Zola has stated, we were with PPNL. PPNL held an open house. There were 300 of us packed into the, the center there by the golf course. We did ask questions. Everybody got quiet. Try to keep 300 people quiet. We all were real quiet. Mr. Zola asked the lady that was in charge, forgive me, but I'm getting older, I can't remember her name from PPNL, and he kept asking questions and he says, "Well, aren't you going to answer my questions?" She said, "No, I said I would listen to your questions." That's what we got. Then I went to the guy with a map, nice big map on there, and I want to know, "I can't find out where my line is going. I know what property they're taking, five acres, 100-year-old trees, a whole hayfield. How are we going to feed our cows?" So, I asked the guy, I says, "Where does mine go through?" Oh, he said, "Oh, you can find all the information." And he's showing me the one from Sugarloaf, the original line. I said, "No, no, I'm in Black Creek." "Oh, there's nothing going there." Okay. Then why did they call me 15 times so far, Robert Bell? From, he's originally from Tennessee, but he's from the Texas group that goes... that goes out and gets the right-of-ways through PPL, so they look good. 15 phone calls, three times to the house, once unannounced. Tried to talk to my neighbor, and my neighbor said, "No, you talk to the landowner, not me." The surveyors were there. I had to throw them out. They never called, they just showed up. But just so you know, there's no tower system going through my area, not at all. They offered me a dollar. I tried to get hold of the right-of-way specialist, Nick Swigert, and I sent him a list of questions, three times. He said, "No, no, we're just thinking about it. We're not really putting one in there." So I don't know about you, but that's not comedy to me. Also, because I'm an old widow, they think they can kind of like come in there and take over and little sweet talk. Normally, when I have trouble with my electricity, like the line was so low, so low, the electric line, I couldn't get my horses in and out of the pasture. It was hanging down. Three months before they came to fix it. Last night, the electric went out. I have five acres they want, and there's no easement on it yet. Would you believe within 15 minutes, PPL was there with the trucks? Not only that, out of all the people there in my road, they brought a generator, and they put the generator up, and I had electricity in my house, nobody else on the line. They fixed it. Within about an hour or two, they had the whole thing fixed. And lastly, I want to say thank you. This has been a long, hard process for you. I know you don't get paid, I paid as much as you should get. I talked to one of the supervisors, and I could not believe in our township what he's making. I would not put up with everything that you guys put up with for the amount of money I'm sure you're making. So please, take these thoughts home and think of us as people. Think of it as, I'm your grandmother, do you want this tower next to my house?
Thank you, Ms. Rizzo.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else's public comment? Yeah.
I spent my wife's life working as electronic engineer.
Just say, state your name and municipality.
Mark Clark, 80 Red Rock Road. I spent my life working as electronic engineer. I could sit here for two hours and lecture you about the harm of EMF given all by that. Anybody that says it doesn't, doesn't know what they're talking about. It is dangerous. It affects the pituitary gland, it affects your melatonin, your serotonin. That's at first. So now you can't sleep, and you're cranky like I am. But it has long-term effects, leukemia, cancer, cancer all up and down my street. Now, I don't look at any study from the United States because it all depends who's paying for the study. You go to Europe and you get an unbiased, impartial, and they all say the same thing. Now, normally, I'm called in this capacity to talk about science. That's not what I'm going to do today. I'm going to ask you guys to go home and look in the mirror. This is a question of right and wrong. This is ethics, this is morality. What side of the line are you on? Are you going to help us or not? I'm sorry, I'm going to lose my house. I'm a little emotional about this.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, go ahead, ma'am, in the back. Just state your name and municipality, please.
Hi, my name's Sherri Boyle. I'm from Sugarloaf Township. I just have 10 seconds. There's so many things that, we're talking about EMFs, and it's very important. I know some of these folks are my neighbors, and the line is literally right next to their house. I don't know if any of you have seen some of the very, very, very large power lines? They do spray herbicides. Everybody knows Monsanto, Roundup. I don't know if you want to breathe that and drink that. That's proven, that's proven very, very bad. They will spray something even worse than that, and that will go into the water tables. It is right in front of my property, and it is right next to all of these people that are from Sugarloaf. So there's so many aspects, not too much mention of that, I heard herbicide, but that stuff is brutal, it's deadly. And we have, yeah, so we have wells. It will be in the water tables. And not to mention the wildlife concern, excuse me. All of the wildlife will be affected by not just the power lines, the light, the herbicides, the noise, the noise, the humming, the buzzing and humming that these things cause is incredible. I just wanted to touch on that and make that more known because I know the EMFs are big, but there's a lot more to it than just the EMFs. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Cochran, did you want to speak?
Robin Cochran, Dallas Township. I guess you're lucky that I am so cold from the air conditioning. I'm only going to talk about what I think is really the most important issue tonight, and it is the PPL resolution. I do want to say how discouraging it was to hear support for watering down the resolution with an amendment and a show of a lack of understanding of the timeliness and how these landmen work. I totally get it, what these people are saying, because 10 years ago, my husband and I went through landmen knocking at our door when we had the natural gas boom come to town, and nobody would help us, not state representatives, not the federal government, nobody. The only person that helped was our one township supervisor, and it made a difference. So please, don't think that there's nothing you can do. Miraculously, we did get the pipeline moved twice. It's still on my land, but they wanted to put it right next to my house. And believe me, it was the most stressful three years of our life of what we had to go through and expense, hiring lawyers just to protect our own home. So my heart truly goes out to all these people, and I'm grateful that council passed the resolution because you have no idea what's coming to town. It's not just going to be PPL. There's going to be a lot more behind it, and you just get, you have to get ahead of this as soon as you can and protect our area. It's true, we're very unique, and in several ways. One way is, they know we're like sheep up here, ready for slaughter. We got the rain tax, we got the casinos. We had a lot of things that have happened to us that they take advantage of us. But you can stand up for us now, and you can change that. You can change Luzerne County, the way things have happened, and you can protect the people, and you can keep our beautiful area beautiful instead of being ruined with all these data centers and the AI. So I only encourage you, please, be creative, be courageous, work for the people, do your research, find out about AI data centers, and I'm sure that you can really help keep northeastern Pennsylvania the beautiful area that it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cochran. Mr. Walsh, did you have another comment you wanted to make?
Jamie Walsh, Ross Township. Just a couple of things for council and the county manager. If you have any questions that you would like me to ask while I'm in Virginia the next two days, leaving tomorrow morning and coming back Thursday afternoon, meeting with constituents, government official, groups in opposition to these for years, for decades, and I try to find groups in favor that I could talk to, but there are none. So I just want you to know, if you have any questions that are burning in your brain tomorrow or tonight, late night, and you want to email them to me, you certainly can, and I'll try to get some answers for you. And as far as, you know, what I'm concerned about, one other thing I am concerned about, since you're going to, you know, be dealing with this a lot in the coming months and potentially year, is I'm really concerned about, you know, there's a lot of townships in my district that are not covered under their own planning and zoning board. They're covered under county councils. And I think we really need to address some type of ordinance to protect the townships that are, that don't have their own planning and zoning boards and that fall under the counties. I would really appreciate if we could have that discussion and maybe on the agenda for maybe not next meeting, but the meeting after, if it works for everybody. Thank you.
Mr. Walsh, just so you know, that is actually what number five was on the agenda to update the ordinance. There's, we're waiting for the grant funding to do that. We are in the process of actually doing that as we speak. Right now, our planning and zoning department is, yeah.
I saw it in the paper, I just didn't know when that was.
Yep, in the process.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else in the audience, public comment? I have two hands up on the Zoom. Mr. Raybo.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raybo of Hazleton speaking.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I was cut off at the three-minute mark. Your alarm went off, and the IT immediately cut me off in mid-sentence. So I'm going to finish that sentence by saying, Con Edison, the power, the power public utility, I believe it's in the Midwest, if I'm not mistaken, in the Great Lakes area where I got my certifications in heavy equipment and crane, do run their high transmission lines underground and even under the Great Lakes. If you check it out, if you want, Mr. Chair, members of council and county manager program, I could send that information to you. I think I did send it previously, but I'll send it again just for your edification. Also, Mr. Chair, you said about Pittston Township, you know, the economic development in Pittston Township. I've driven a commercial truck through Pittston Township. I know the high transmission lines there very well, and I hear the buzzing, and I hear all the stuff, and it, but it's in a commercial and industrial zone. It's not snaking through, I don't believe it's snaking through massive residential areas. Even if they are, they're, they're within the commercial and industrial districts that are zoned for that usage. So I don't know about that, what you were alluding to there. But the, what the vice chairman said about the economic development for LRTAs, he said that LRTAs are, you know, like, and I believe the person who had at the work session in a one-hour and 20-minute filibuster said that LRTAs are the end-all, be-all. LRTAs are not the end-all, be-all. I'm not saying he's alluding to that, but he's making it out to be, whereas the economic development tools that are provided by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, specifically DCD, give a plethora of economic development tools that the county has at their disposal but chooses not to. So I think that should be made clear. And Mr. Chair, one request. Can you close out the meeting in a moment of silence for West Hazleton Borough Mayor Frank Schmidt? He was a loyal public servant, and he believed in living by example. And I think that his example shines brightly for all public servants, those appointed and elected officials who served in southern Luzerne County. So I make that request. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. We certainly can do that for Mayor Schmidt. Okay, Ashley Bart.
Ashley Bart, Hazleton. I want to thank the council members for your votes this evening, and also just want to speak to and make the reminder, as was mentioned, that the LRTAs were originally put in place to be an incentive to revitalize deteriorated mine lands. If you go and look at the properties in Hazel Township and Sugarloaf Township at least, you will see that those properties are not deteriorated. They may have been at one point. If anything, they have destroyed them by clearing out over 1,200 acres of wooded area, which is done strategically, by the way, in between of protected species, because if those species were there at the time, they wouldn't have been able to do it. So there's a lot of unethical and strategic and opportunistic choices that are being made that are not in the spirit of what that incentive was originally meant for. We are also, in my opinion, overwhelmingly industrialized in those regions and in the county as a whole. So yes, when we're looking out at what these decisions are going to be in 40 years, we do need to take that into consideration because there will be nothing left if all this goes through. And so I'm not afraid to say, like, not that I'm against it. I've been a businessperson my whole adult life. We need the right businesses. We need to consider rezoning some of these industrial areas. There needs to be recreation, there needs to be commercial, more commercial properties. There can be other things. It doesn't have to be these empty warehouses. And, you know, you can go online and look at the comments of people. It's easy to say, like, "Oh, we are just an industrialized area." It's not what we want anymore. Like, it's enough, we've had enough. There's ways to beautify and revitalize this region in a different way in coherence with what's already here, but not making it worse.
Thank you, Ms. Bart. Okay, anybody else's public comment? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Could I respond, please?
Mr. Thornton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Controller Walter Griffith made a comment that amendments to resolutions should be public knowledge and shouldn't be haphazardly or randomly thrown out at a public meeting like this. I agree with that. I don't think I've ever done that in the past. However, he admitted one very important material fact. This resolution, resolutions are normally given to council two weeks ahead of time in a work session with the specific language. This one was not. None of us saw this until Friday, when it was publicly advertised in the papers, went out for public advertisement. So I didn't have this language to read it. Had I had it two weeks ago, I would have suggested an amendment at that time. I think what happened was, Mr. Haas lobbied heavily with the chair to put it directly on the voting session without us being able to view it ahead of time. So there it was, that's fine. We ran with it. And I want to remind everybody that everybody knew, including Mr. Griffith, that we didn't have the ability to see this resolution before the public did. It came out Friday, and that was it. He knew that, but he admitted that fact. And I want to remind everybody, I voted for the resolution tonight, and I did state, I was not advocating or defending PPL. I mean that. I just, the only amendment I tried to make was to suggest the public attend those hearings, and I still think you should. I'm not saying that's going to save everybody or do anything. I just thought it'd be wise to put that in the resolution, but that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, okay. We're going to have a motion to adjourn in memory of Mayor Frank Schmidt from West Hazleton. Is that, Mr. Lovett, you're making that motion?
Second.
Okay. Yep, moment of silence. All right, thank you. We'll resume at 8:30.
Recording stopped.
Chris, you dropped a pen. Some of them can be expensive, others are even.
Take it to the bathroom first, everyone.
By the way, that was a good call. It was like, and then you were like, you might want to.
want to.
Yeah.
It's lit, I mean, if you wanna, if you wanna wait for one of us when we're done, you're evaporating.
Yeah, that's gonna be a little, yeah.
It has nothing to do with the PPL, so the only thing that you're gonna have to worry about, yeah, is public comment, and people are gonna be staying. But, most of the people here already addressed their concerns, but first public comment and second public comment. I don't know what else they're gonna say anymore.
He's going home anyway.
Why isn't he just calling you?
He knows better.
Why don't you have a birthday party?
Retirement party.
I told Jessica. I didn't ditch you. I did not ditch you.
It's lit, I mean, if you wanna, if you wanna wait for one of us when we're done, you're evaporating.
Yeah, that's gonna be a little, yeah.
It has nothing to do with the PPL, so the only thing that you're gonna have to worry about, yeah, is public comment, and people are gonna be staying.
But, most of the people here already addressed their concerns, but first public comment and second public comment.
I don't know what else they're gonna say anymore.
He's going home anyway.
Why isn't he just calling you?
He knows better.
He knows better.
Why don't you have a birthday party?
A retirement party.
I told Jessica.
I didn't ditch you.
I did not ditch you.
Hey, he's checking up, he's calling you.
Well, he's trying.
My phone, my phone's downstairs.
It's not, the phone's ringing, it's not, it's beautiful.
I'm like, what do you want?
It has nothing to do with the PPL, so the only thing that you're gonna have to worry about, yeah, is public comment, and people are gonna be staying. But, most of the people here already addressed their concerns, but first public comment and second public comment. I don't know what else they're gonna say anymore.
He's going home anyway.
Why isn't he just calling you?
He knows better.
He knows better.
Why don't you have a birthday party?
A retirement party.
I told Jessica.
The first report is your revenue report. Revenue earned is at eighty-three percent of budget or one hundred and thirty-nine million, two hundred and eleven thousand, two seventy-six. Our current year tax collections as of the end of July are at one hundred and twelve million, which represents ninety-seven percent of the current year tax revenue budget. Our expenses are at seventy-two million, three hundred and fifty thousand, two sixty-six, or forty-five percent of budget. Next is your listing of budget transfers, followed by the accounts payable detail. The last report is your treasurer's report, showing a cash balance of one hundred and seventy-nine million, three ninety-nine at the end of July. The cash balance at the end of June was one hundred and ninety million. Our interest that we've earned for the month of July is three hundred and three thousand, four sixty-five. Of that, ARPA accounts for one hundred and fifty-six thousand, six ninety-nine. Our year-to-date total interest that we've earned through July is at two-point-three million. Our ARPA cash balance is at thirty-seven million, two forty-four eighty-five. Our ARPA interest that we've earned this year is at one-point-two million, and our interest earned since inception is at nine-point-one million. Also, I wanted to let everyone know that we've started working on our twenty-twenty-six budget. We had budget meetings all day yesterday and today and tomorrow and Thursday for the foreseeable future. So, we're working on that now. That's the focus of budget and finance right now. Does anyone have any questions for me? Hi, Freddie.
You're going to get a new, big, beautiful binder.
There you go. You are going to get a new, big, beautiful binder. Absolutely. The tabs are ready to go already. Jen is on it.
Fantastic.
It's great reading material, right?
Any other questions? Any other remarks? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Number two, discussion regarding the resolution adopting the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. Go ahead.
So, we are required, if we want to be eligible for any FEMA funding, if there are disasters, the Hazard Mitigation Plan has to be updated, which we have the consultant on the line. Dan's going to give you a couple of highlights, but the next council meeting, you'll have to adopt it, so we are eligible.
Yes, so we started the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update last December. It's been a pretty quick process, getting it to the point where it's been adopted. It was adopted July thirty-first by, not adopted, it was approved July thirty-first by FEMA. So now, it's going out to all the municipalities. All seventy-six municipalities have to pass an ordinance in order to adopt the Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is the work session, the voting session is going to be two weeks for you guys to adopt the Hazard Mitigation Plan for the county. And so far, we've received seven adopted resolutions from municipalities. I'm still waiting on sixty-nine more. And I have Devin Bennie from Michael Baker International. She's the project manager lead that helped us with updating the Hazard Mitigation Plan. I don't know if she can speak now, but I'm going to run the presentation for her.
Hi, thanks, Dan. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Perfect. I'm going to quickly go through some highlights of the plan. I think Dan gave a great overview. If you want to go to the next slide. So, I'm here today, as Dan mentioned, because the plan was approved by FEMA on July thirty-first. And so, we are now in the process of plan adoption, which means that you all, as a council, will need to adopt the plan on the county's behalf within the next year, although we're looking for you to adopt sooner than that. So, I'm going to give a brief overview to the plan and then talk about what adoption means, just very quickly. Next slide. So, for the plan overview, I'm going to give some very high-level details. It is a pretty long plan, over four-hundred pages with appendices. If you want to take a look at it at any point and have any questions, you're definitely welcome to ask me or Dan. But, in general, if you want to go to the next slide, Dan, the Hazard Mitigation Plan is really a document that is meant to help Luzerne County and all of its municipalities reduce their risk to hazards. It's really meant to help with your decision-making when it comes to risk. And then also, it provides eligibility for specific mitigation grants. If you want to go to the next slide. The plan, as I mentioned, is pretty long. It consists of seven different sections. I would say number four, the risk assessment, number five, the capability assessment, and number six, the mitigation strategy, are really the biggest components of the actual plan. If you want to go to the next slide. The risk assessment looks at all of the potential natural hazards and human-made hazards that could potentially impact Luzerne County. This slide shows that all of the hazards that were profiled in the twenty-twenty-five plan, and anything in red, there was either an addition or change to that title and hazard profile since the twenty-twenty plan. I should back up and mention that it is required by FEMA that each Hazard Mitigation Plan for every county is updated every five years, and so this is a five-year update of the plan. Every hazard profile looks at the risk for each hazard in relation to the entire county, as well as at the jurisdictional level. And this is really important in terms of identifying where the county is vulnerable to each hazard. We also look at all of the different assets in communities that may be at risk, and so this really helps identify where mitigation may be fit, if you want to go to the next slide. The capability assessment really focuses on different types of plans and abilities to be able to mitigate risk across the county. We spoke with a bunch of different organizations and also had communities fill out their own assessment of their capabilities to identify where there is the ability to help with mitigation efforts and also where there are gaps which help inform the mitigation strategy. As you can see on this slide, communities feel they have, you know, some ability to help mitigate risk, but there are also areas that there are gaps in that this plan can help maybe identify how to create partnerships and help address those gaps. Next slide. And so, really, the, all of the findings from the risk assessment and the capability assessment go into developing the mitigation strategy, which focuses on different actions that communities in the county want to take in order to mitigate risks. In order to apply for specific funding grants at FEMA, you must have an action in the plan to be able to apply for that funding. So, we worked with all of the communities and stakeholders to develop this plan, and this is really what will be used moving forward to help implement mitigation priorities in the county. Next slide, please. And so, here we are, ready to adopt the plan. I'm going to give a very brief overview of how we got here and kind of what the next steps are and what this means. Next slide. So, over the past couple of months, we went through the process of having FEMA review the plan, as well as FEMA. And both of those reviews, we made edits based on their feedback, and FEMA ultimately, on July thirty-first, approved the plan pending adoption, which means when communities and the county adopt the plan and also any additional stakeholders who want to adopt as a special district, as they adopt the plan, they then can use it to leverage it for themselves to apply for grant funding. And so, as you can see, we're in the process of getting jurisdictions to adopt the plan and also getting the county to adopt the plan, which is why I'm here tonight. And as the plan is adopted, FEMA will issue approval letters showing that each community and stakeholder is good for the five years until the next plan is updated. Next slide, please. And so, what we're here asking for you tonight is to take a look at the plan and then adopt it on behalf of the county. Because we've received APA or approvable pending adoption from FEMA, you are able to adopt the plan as soon as you would like. This is done by signing a resolution, which I have an image on the next slide, and Dan has a copy that can be shared with the council. I believe the plan is to have you all vote on that and sign it at the next meeting on September ninth. And so, once that's approved and signed, Dan will end up sending that to FEMA and the county will have the plan adopted. Next slide, please. And so, this is just an image of what you will be filling out and signing. If there are any questions about logistics, I'm happy to answer them, but this will be shared by Dan after the meeting. Next slide, please. And so, just some logistics. As soon as FEMA receives the first adoption, that starts the time of the five years starting for when the plan needs to be updated. So, as Dan mentioned, seven municipalities have adopted the plan, and so that starts that clock. Every participating jurisdiction has one year from this date to adopt the plan, and so that's why we're getting this in front of you now. And then, we also recommend that there are annual review meetings to kind of look at what's changed over the course of a year. So then, when you get to the next five-year update, there is data and information, and it makes the list a little less significant. FEMA does send a reminder email each year, and Dan will be receiving that from FEMA, I believe, and you all can help navigate that update process. I believe that is in the presentation. I don't know if there's another slide, Dan. Oh, sorry, I did forget about this slide. There are specific FEMA grants, as I mentioned, that you must have an adopted Hazard Mitigation Plan to apply for. As of right now, that still holds true, and so having this plan in place and adopted will help you be eligible to apply for grants during disasters and also if non-disaster funding is still available. Next slide, please. With that, any questions? I know I really breezed through that. I was trying to be quick within the allotted time given, but it is a very large plan. I'm happy to field any questions today or at a future date, if interested.
I just have one question, then, other council members. We will have an opportunity to see the full plan, the full four-hundred-some-page plan?
Yeah, I can send you the link. It's on the webpage for the Hazard Mitigation Plan, but I could send that to council.
Yeah, if you could send that to our council email, that would be awesome.
Absolutely, yeah.
Mr. Sebatino.
What is the plan to get the other municipalities? Do you anticipate resistance of getting?
No, I mean, they all participated in developing the plan. So, it's just getting them to sign it, adopt it.
Any help we can give you there?
I appreciate it.
For motivating them?
Please ask us.
Happy to do that.
We have a list of ones that we need to talk to.
I mean, we just started getting the adopted. We have a year to get them, but...
But maybe if it's coming up on the end of the year and we don't have it?
Yeah, I created a dashboard to, like, hound them. And I'm going to send out, like, monthly, maybe shame maps to show them that these are the ones that have approved it.
Let us know about them, too. Maybe we can reach out to them and encourage them in the nicest way possible.
Yep.
Did you have a question, Stevenson? Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
All right, these next two should be very quick. Discussion regarding the resolution placing a moratorium on future LERTA requests for properties to be serviced by the Sugarloaf Transmission Project.
Can we do the West Hazelton?
Let's do the, all right, hold on a second.
Yeah, number three.
Oh, I apologize. I Xed out number three beforehand. Okay, discussion regarding the resolution forgiving the loan from interest on the UDAG fund to West Hazelton Borough for their J.C. Drive Bridge Replacement Project.
So, as you recall, the county council used UDAG money and gave a loan to West Hazelton Borough, four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars to repair a bridge, that part of the bridge that collapsed. We were able to negotiate that we can receive a PennDOT grant of four-hundred-thousand dollars to do a road on Crestwood Drive in exchange for forgiving the loan of West Hazelton. And the benefit of that is that we will get a much-needed road in Crestwood Drive, and we wouldn't have to wait for the monthly payments from West Hazelton.
Any questions? I think that's fantastic, and we've, obviously, we forgive the loan to them.
Correct.
In that process, so then they don't have to continue paying on it.
Correct. It's a win-win for the county and for the borough.
Right. It was a very good idea and partnership we had with West Hazelton in order to get that bridge project finished quickly. Any other questions, remarks?
I just have some questions. So, we're taking, it was ARPA money that was used, Ramilda, so UDAG money that we gave to Wes Hazelton. I wasn't, UD, okay, three years ago.
No, it was last year.
It was the end of twenty-three.
Yeah.
Before, yeah, because I remember that. I don't think I was here for that one.
Right, there was a, we gave them ARPA money to repair this, a bridge. And when they started doing the work, part of the bridge collapsed, which needed more repairs. And so, the state gave them money, because it was about another million dollars that they needed to repair the portion of the bridge that collapsed. And we loaned them four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, and they've been paying, it was a no-interest loan, they've been paying, making their payments. But we can get state money to actually do a road now and then forgive the loan to Wes Hazelton.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I think that's great. We need roads. Why this particular one, Ramilda? Was this a state initiative? Why the industrial, the Crestwood Road?
Because it's really in bad shape.
Okay.
It was recommended by our engineer.
Engineer, okay. I'm just trying to figure out how this all came through. How did this, how did this, did PennDOT reach out to us? Did we reach out to them? How did this whole thing?
PennDOT reached out to, reached out to me.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
About doing the swap. So, we had UDAG money, which has encumbrances.
No, it was interest money. It was interest money that has zero encumbrances, and the UDAG money, we have an opinion from our outside council, that UDAG money we can use for whatever purpose we want. But we use the interest money.
Okay. Yeah, I know, I don't think we ever got acceptable uses for the UDAG money. Did we ever get that as a council? I don't remember getting that. Do we do have that?
There was an opinion that was given to us by Elliot Greenleaf and Dean. Jack Dean was here at an executive session.
Okay. So, this is the county roads, county road number twenty-five, and I'm guessing Wes Hazelton already paid us enough money to make up that difference, that twenty-five thousand?
Pretty much.
I'm assuming that.
Pretty much. It's negligible if there is a difference.
Okay. Well, it just seems like, I mean, we're helping Wes Hazelton Borough, that's fantastic, but it seems like it's a wash for us, because it's our money anyway. We're just going to basically fast-track it. That's what the sell is for this one, Ramilda?
Sell is that we're going to get a road finished.
Yeah, but it's going to be...
To Kenny Road.
It's going to be, yeah, but it's going to be, it's going to be a fast track. It's not going to be three years.
No, no, it's happening.
Immediately.
It's delayed for the stormwater report to be done, because they don't want us to do that.
Oh, yes. Always the stormwater report. Yeah. Okay, I mean, it sounds great, just want to make sure I get the details right.
Details.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? All right. Number four, discussion regarding the resolution placing a moratorium on future LERTA requests for properties to be serviced by the Sugarloaf Transmission Project.
Yeah, Ms. Chair, thanks for putting this on the work session agenda, and I know I didn't lobby you for the other ones, I just asked to put on the other two on the agenda for time constraints. Time is of the essence. This one, I was hoping that the other, the LERTA would pass earlier, so we didn't have to take this more extreme route, because that's essentially what this is. This is a moratorium on LERTAs, but this one actually has a whole lot more teeth, because if we can't, we can't tell people, no, you can't do this, obviously, there's a whole process out there. But what this does, the whole idea of this, is to, again, have more community consensus, grow smartly, not just hapazily, like we've seen in other jurisdictions across America, and really coerce PPL to the table. I mean, yourself, John, said that they were disingenuous with you. They were disingenuous to the folks that are here. I think seeing this here also shows that we're serious about coming to the table and being transparent about things. So, I mean, the support of this would do just that. Now, obviously, I'm sure if some other colleagues were, they would say, this is going to severely restrict development, it's really going to give a black eye, it's going to tell people Luzerne County is not open for business. No, it's not. This is helping coerce a giant business interest who is concerned with bottom lines more than quality of life issues to come to the table and really just make it work. This is not extreme. Again, I'm not anti-development, I'm not anti-power lines. We need electricity. We need that. But I think some of the folks that brought some items here tonight, especially that one that we're a net exporter of energy, that was very curious. That was a very interesting fact. I'd like to see more of that. But it's things like this that I would like to see PPL come to us with as early as next week, I think they're going to meet with some of us, and if they could bring their full data, I would like to see maps, I would like to see the alternatives, I would like to see things that they say they've done, so let's have a discussion about this. What this does, again, it's a little more down-extreme than what we just passed earlier, but I think it's going to yield results. If we get what we want, we don't have to go through with this to put on the next voting session. We don't have to say, okay, we definitely have a moratorium, but it's going to bring people to the table, and I'm sure we'll have other interests, too, that would gladly chime in on this. So, I'm happy to have the discussion, but that's really the genesis of what we're looking at here.
Council members. So, Mr. Haas, I, I mean, I do have concerns about this, just as I had concerns about the LERTA schedule, and I know that you kind of flip-flopped, you said that people will say that it will reduce the amount of interest in this area, but we have heard testimony from people that says exactly that, that says that something like this will, in fact, reduce the amount of business development that will come into this area. And I understand that there are desires to only want certain types of development or only want certain types of things in the area, but if they come to us, I mean, I'm going to say yes to that, too. I'm not just going to say yes to a warehouse or to a data center or to a, you know, a train station that may want to come to the area. I'm going to say yes to everything, because I think that we could have it all. We can have all of that, and we can have that be a real benefit to the citizens of the county. And as we do these LERTAs, we do them in an individual way. And, you know, now, okay, so we know to ask certain questions, and I'm happy to ask any question that needs to be asked at these work sessions. And, you know, part of the problem is that we have, and I'm not trying to pick on you, Mr. Haas, but we have agenda items that get submitted last minute that go on to the voting session, and then, as we're expected the same night to vote on them, we have council members that are uncomfortable with language, they want to change things, they want to have a discussion about it, and then we end up here at nine o'clock at night trying to hash out something that's a really serious resolution, like this. And when we have LERTAs that are on work sessions, we don't have an opportunity to sit here and have a really good thorough discussion, because it's nine o'clock at night, three of our council members just left, because they don't want to be here anymore. And I'm not saying that that's right or wrong, I mean, I certainly will stay here as long as I need to, to have the discussion, but I know that I'm not going to be firing all cylinders at eleven PM. So, I think, you know, I just want to be, and as the chair of council, I try to be mindful of that when I set the agenda, is to make sure that we have enough time to have discussions about a lot of these contentious issues. So, when I get things at the last minute, it makes it really difficult for me to be able to account for the amount of time that we'll have to discuss these things, and it may end up bleeding into a situation where we just don't get enough time to have a good conversation. As it relates back to this, though, I mean, I certainly, you know, sympathize with the situation, and as a matter of fact, somebody mentioned, I forget who it was, it might have been Mr. Raybo, mentioned that he said the Pittston Area School District again and mentioned the power lines. My parents, in their development, a two-hundred-and-thirty kilovolt power line actually bisects their residential development. So, I've lived with this situation for all the years that I lived with my parents, and I get it. I understand totally that it is an eyesore, and it is something that I was told, stay away from, don't go near there when you're a child. I understand all that, and I certainly support the residents of Sugarloaf as they try to get the power line moved away from the properties that they're looking to move it away from. But, I mean, I personally would have liked to have a little bit more discussion on what the alternatives are. I know I've heard some things, but that's kind of why I wanted to have all the stakeholders in the room to be able to have that conversation. And, you know, we haven't done that, and that's what made me angry at PPL, is because they didn't take the time to address the public and address council. So, as it relates to this, though, I just, I think that as we are discussing these issues, they're not mutually exclusive. One does not exist without the other. In certain cases, this is not going to stop, I don't think, this is going to stop that power line from coming through, because all of these developments that the power line essentially is being used for are already in place, are already getting ready to be put in place. So, I think that to continue to just do these LERTAs on an individual basis is the best for us, because we have complete control over that, and that way, we're not scaring away development, and we can still advocate for the citizens, and we're still telling them, okay, you have to be in a blighted area. I like a lot of the ideas that were shared here tonight, to make sure that things aren't being put too close to houses and stuff like that. But we do have a lot of blighted property here in Luzerne County. We have a lot of property. I know just near where I live, I can think of five places right now that have big, giant comb banks that are completely, you know, difficult to look at, dangerous. I know in my job as a firefighter, we go to them quite often to have to rescue people that are riding ATVs. They fall off of them. We had one gentleman, like, put up booby traps in them, which was very bizarre and disturbing, to keep people from actually going in them, which makes them ten times more dangerous. So, I totally understand that. So, I would like to see those areas be redeveloped into something that's more usable, at least safer for the community. And, I mean, I don't know many private citizens who are going to be able to put out that kind of money to redevelop that, those types of areas. So, I think that we need to sort of balance these ideas, but I certainly, like I said, I support the residents of Sugarloaf, and I totally understand the situation. That's why I supported this resolution earlier tonight, but I think that this is a completely different issue. Go ahead, Mr. Sebatino.
Mr. Skeen, correct me if I'm wrong, but the local municipalities are the ones that declare land eligible for LERTA, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, we don't...
Normally, we don't look at it at all until the local municipality approves LERTA, the school district approves LERTA, and then it comes to us at the end.
But the local municipality establishes what, in their municipality, what they consider to be blighted land and eligible for LERTA?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that the same in the case of the municipalities who are governed under our zoning ordinance?
That's different.
Right.
So, the zoning is different from the LERTA.
Okay.
They're deciding it's blighted or it's on property that needs to be developed, it was formerly a property that wasn't. And normally, these developers put a lot of money in to clean up the property, to make it suitable, and that kind of property usually is not available for homes.
Right, but I'm putting that out there as a way for people in the audience to maybe address it with their local supervisors and borough councils, what land they are declaring to be LERTA-eligible. And if they find that there is land that shouldn't be on that list, they should take it up with their supervisors and their, and their local borough councils and city councils and so on.
Right. The land that we're talking about at issue is already approved land that could be used for LERTA. But where the ordinance, I mean, the resolution you're planning on doing is then going to say a portion of the county is going to have a moratorium, and other parts are not, which means we're theoretically discriminating against a portion that is already approved land for LERTA, and we're allowing it in different sections. Whereas, if you listen to anybody who wanted to have LERTA and decided, I don't want to allow it there, I don't want that, that's fine. But you're putting a moratorium on and saying, people can't go here, and it's not land that's not already developed, it's specifically with the intent of stopping the line from coming in.
And one more point of clarification. I know that it kind of got muddled in some of the public comments, but the land that the power line is going on is not, it's not LERTA-eligible. So, I know that got muddled in there a little bit. We would not grant a LERTA for a power line.
Right. That's, yeah.
But, Ms. Chair?
Mr. Haas.
I don't want to take up, does anyone else want to chime in first? I'm sorry. Does anyone else want to go?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So, one hand washes the other in this, clearly, it's latent demand. If you build a bigger highway, you extend eighty-one, a couple lanes, you're going to have more traffic, correct? If you extend transmission lines, you're going to have more of electricity, you're going to have more, and more development and large-scale development. That's what you're, that's what we're doing here, okay? That's why North Virginia, when Representative Walsh goes, he's going to find out, that's exactly what happened down there. So, you had one data center, begat another one, begat another one. So, when we look at this, yeah, I agree with Attorney Skeen. Yes, this is discriminatory. LERTAs are discriminatory. Every time council says yea or nay against one, you're discriminating against people who apply for it, that are entities that apply for it. That's essentially the nature of it. You said, you, no, no.
I said the resolution...
What's that? What's that?
In the resolution, you're saying people from here to here need not apply because we're putting a moratorium on it.
Yes.
So you're discriminating against that one line compared to anywhere else in the county. On a regular basis, you're not discriminating against somebody because you don't approve LERTA. There's been plenty of LERTAs that have come here that we've not approved. Well, not me, I don't vote. But you guys have not approved because you didn't like the LERTA.
We just, we just didn't do a carte blanche. We just did it on a, on a case by case, which is still discriminatory. We're saying no, and we, we really don't disapprove a lot of LERTAs. We approve most of them. And we let the developer dictate the terms, which is again, why the schedule would have been extremely helpful. And I, I just don't think that's going to go anywhere. I mean, I, it'd be nice, but I'm, I'm just saying about this particular one, yes, that.
All right.
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to explain, but there, there's nothing wrong with that. There's nothing wrong with saying no to an area of LERTA for Luzerne County. We're not speaking for the school district and we're not speaking for the municipality. So developers may still propose LERTA for those designations. They're just not going to get abatement on county funds. And that's the nature of it. That's the, that's the stick that we have. That's the only stick we have in this outfit. Because we cannot tell PPL to not come here and just say, no, we're not interested in a power line. No, there's a process. Councilman Thornton was talking about that, right? You have to go through the PUC. There's a lot of protocol. You have to have public comment. But what this does, it is a disincentive for unchecked rampant growth. And it is a dissentive. Yes, and I understand what you're talking about, Chair. Yeah. Agreed. It's, it's going, it's not going to stifle growth, but it will force the developers to think a little more clearly about their proposals and about, about moving that forward. We've had plenty of LERTAs here in my time that were, that were approved and it was done very haphazardly. Do you recall the one, I don't know if anybody was on council at that time. Hazlenan City, uh, developer came and approached the city. They gave Hazlenan City a better deal than Luzerne County. And they kept on saying, well, that's the deal the, the city accept. That's the deal. And I kept on asking them, well, why? And they couldn't come up with the answer. Well, the answer is because you're a business and you want the best bottom line. And I don't fault them for that. Okay? So again, this all comes back, it's kind of part of the same coin here that this puts council in the driving seat to have a degree of control over the development that comes here.
Mr. Wilovich and a, a couple people before you, Mr. Perry. Mr. Wilovich, Mr. Sabatino, Mr. Perry.
Okay. So my understanding is they were trying to move the power line, right? Your resolution stating if it uses any power line, no matter if it's the one that's moved or the one that they're proposing, that you can't get alerted. Is that my understanding correct?
To use the proposed power line coming through for, it's a temporary proposal. It's not indefinite. It's temporary. It is indefinite. It's because we want to, for them to examine other alternative routes that are more palatable to the rest of the public.
But yours just says service via the Sugarloaf Transmission Project, not which one?
The one that's looking to expand.
It doesn't say propose. It just says service via the Transmission Project. I would assume if they did move the lines, it would still fall under this LERT, your LERTA proposal.
No, it's, it's the one in question. I mean, we, we can wordsmith it. We can make it, we can tighten that up, Greg, if you want. But I mean, obviously I'm not talking about any other line. I'm talking about the one in question here.
Well, the future council might not understand that.
Then if you only, you can make the amendment if you want to, but I'm, I'm just saying that's obviously the spirit of this. And yeah, you're right. A lot of, a lot of things on council, we don't look 10 years in the past too. That was bad precedent.
We should look 10 years in the future.
All right. Uh, Mr. Sabatino.
To answer about why I wanted the schedule to go back to committee, we did not do enough to address data centers and different types of things. And I didn't think the voting session was appropriate to negotiate that. And I want to go back and do, be very intentional on how we do this. Because we could do something like get a community fund together that, to bring back, and you and I have talked about this, to bring back the homestead and let the developers pay for it. Okay? So we need to be more intentional about it. We need to, like you're trying to do with this, it's get blood from a stone, basically. We can be more intentional with the schedule and how we're presenting it. But to haphazardly negotiate it in a voting session is not the way I want my legislation to be done. So I appreciate that we wanted to get it done tonight, but this is kind of my baby and I want to do it the right way. And I want to get the most for the residents of the county. And if that means that we're going to talk about it for another two months, then we're going to talk about it for another two months. So I appreciate this and I want to do this. But we need to be more intentional and we need to be more focused on not just past precedent, but like Councilman Wilovich said, the future too, and how we are addressing the future of this county.
And thanks for the forthrightness, Jim. I appreciate that. So again, you're looking more of a bottom line thing, what we can wring out of for taxpayers. I'm looking at the more globalized quality of life. And that's what we've got to look, that's long, that's not 10 years, that's 50 years in the future, like a lot of folks here said tonight. We're looking at a quality of life issue that it walks out the door every time we have these conversations. All we've come down to the bottom line. We need development, we need development, we need development. Yeah, but at what cost?
Mr. Perry and then Ms. Smith, then Mr. Sabatino. Again, I apologize.
Well, Mr. Haas, and we're, we're on opposite sides of the fence with LERTAs, but boy, I mean, with this situation, it, it really changes the scope. And I think as a council, we learned a lot. And if we were to ask a very simple question, when North Point came up to ask us for LERTA, and we asked a lot of questions, and you really did, and all we had to ask was, how are you getting the power to your facility? That one question. We wouldn't allow this, that, we, we, we never would have passed it if we would have asked that one question. We dropped the ball on that. We didn't ask the question because we didn't know to ask the question. But we've gotten better going forward. And you could attest to that. I was on eight years ago, we passed LERTAs like, because that was the thing to do at that time. We've gotten a whole lot better. The, the county got a lot better financially. With the last few LERTAs we passed, maybe North Point was even one of them, they've given us a lot more money. The next LERTA that comes to us and it has anything to do with data centers, well, this is, we learned a lesson. We will ask those questions and we won't be given, I won't be here, December is the end for me. But the next council that gets on, it won't be easy to get a LERTA. And we, because we, we paid the price for it. They paid the price for it. I would like to stop PPL in a second, but apparently what they told the chairman, doesn't matter. They're putting that line in. I says, and that, and that, and I really bothers me that we didn't ask that question because things would have been totally different. So we really did drop the ball there, but again, we didn't mean to because we just didn't know to ask that question. Everybody knew it was coming from PPL, but how was it getting there?
We did ask that question numerous times.
How was it getting there?
Yeah. What upgrades do you need for the grid? We, we did ask that question.
Why didn't somebody like, like say, okay?
We pressed them on it too, Mr. Perry. We did press them in the Infrastructure Committee meeting.
That's why I voted no.
Wait a minute. I, I, I want to interject here on North Point. North Point, you, you're, you're, you're focusing on North Point and, and they were not dishonest with us at all. And I want to be clear about that. And the, the, the power line, it is a PPL issue. And it's a PPL, I've been trying to get them to, to, along with the chair, we've both been trying to get PPL to answer questions, specific questions about, about what's going on in Sugarloaf Township. This is a PPL issue. It is not a North Point issue.
Right.
Because North Point would continue on with their development.
I didn't mean to insinuate that it was North Point. They obviously didn't have the answers to give us because they didn't know what PPL's plans were. But maybe for doing data centers like this, we should ask PPL to come before we do a LERTA and ask them what they're planning on doing.
Or we could have, or, or we could have pressed them on that issue, but I mean.
Hindsight is 2020, Mr. Perry.
Well, I, I, I understand that, but it bothers me that, that, you know, we didn't think of that.
We were asking the right questions to the wrong people.
Yeah.
Well.
But ju, and, and just to, just to, I, I apologize. I know Ms. Smith wants to speak, but just to add to that. I mean, this, this to me is going a little bit further than what we need it to do. Because it, you know, a warehouse that stores goods is not going to be consuming as, as much electricity as a data center is.
Might still utilize that line though.
Might?
What I'm saying, it would be banned under his.
Right. Right. So that, that's what I'm suggesting is that that might not, it may not use that electricity, which means that line would not necessarily have been necessary. But the line, again, you know, the, the data center that is, that is already going to be constructed and going to be used by that line is, it's already occurring. So I, I just don't see how this is going to, this is going to stop this situation from happening by us not continuing to negotiate with developers about specific projects that they have. And they don't always come to us with speculative development. In fact, many times they come to us with specific things they'd like to do.
And to be honest, what we have to do is recruit the right development. Somebody said it tonight. That's what we have to do. That's what we have to target. We have to target the right development that's right for our communities. And not every community is the same. And certain development might work in one area that might not work in another. And that's what we need to do. The fight is with, with getting answers from PPL. That's, that's what the fight is. And the fight, the forum of the fight is at the PUC and at the DEP. Because that's, that's the forum that's going to ultimately decide. And if you have the, you have the arguments, you have those arguments and they're very convincing arguments, that's what you have to do. You have to make those arguments in this forum that is, exists to decide that. And we as a community have to make sure that we get the right development in the right areas. And we do that by doing our homework. And if there are developers that are coming, we do ask certain questions now.
Yeah. Thanks for saying it, Ramilda. I really appreciate that because I, I feel like, um, it's almost like I'm just trying to be open and transparent. My colleagues on the other side of this issue just want development at all costs. And I, I, I'm having a hard time, people just acknowledging that there's a lot of quality of life at stake here. This is, this is truly what's at stake long-term. And so I feel like I'm being talked past when I bring things like that up, you know, admittedly, this is more extreme. But again, it's like, that's what recourse, not many recourse we have left here. So I don't know how, what, what we could do as a county, what resources we can marshal to do just what you said there. I really appreciate that. What, what product can we put together? We have, we got, we have people that are going to show up at the PUC. That's fine. But what as a county, what can we do? You know, and I, I would challenge all my colleagues here, management, everybody has a stake in this, to, to really put a project because time is of the essence. That's why I appreciate you, John, putting this on here. I didn't lobby him to put these on like was that, I didn't do that. I asked him, he said, yeah. And I, I appreciate it. John, John's always been a pleasure to work with in my tenure. I really respect that. But time is of the essence. Time is wasting. Every day that goes by, we're, we're, I feel like we're on the losing end. I think the people here feel the same way. We're losing out. Okay? So let's get the show on the road and really go to bat for our people. We have to do it and for, for the next generations. I feel like now I'm, I'm starting to go down that path, just yammer on here. But, um, you know, just, just as a closing thought here, I would still like to see this on the voting session in general. What the process, Mr. Chair, if we need four votes here to move it forward, I know it's.
Resolution.
I, I, it's a resolution. Okay. So I would like to see this. And I think this shows that we're extremely serious about this. That there's a lot more at stake here than just the bottom line.
Well, Mr. Haas, I, I got to respond to what you said about, you know, council members wanting development at whatever the cost is. It's not.
Right. I'm just saying it appears that way.
That's not what we're saying at all. You know, there's a lot of different types of development that want to come to this area right now. We're having discussions currently about getting our rail line back from our RDA so we can bring development through that into the areas where that rail line runs. Um, and, and, and the economic development that that will bring. We've made major investments through the American Rescue Plan in the Wokesbury area. Imagine if we had a train station in the Wokesbury area and not just in Pittston. Imagine if we had that there. We can bring 2,000 residents a day into the new Irem, uh, Irem Temple when they have a show. We can bring residents to the, uh, to the theater in Wokesbury and downtown at the Kirby Center. So we're not just talking about tax abatements for these, uh, these, these blighted properties and for these developers that are coming in just for warehouses. I mean, there's a global conversation that's happening right now. And unfortunately, it's, it's, it's getting lost in the other conversations that we're having. So we are having those conversations. They're happening. It's not just about LERTAs. It's not just about warehouses. It's not just about data centers. It's about all of the above. And that's going to be, uh, what, what is going to be the holistic approach that we need to make, you know, this county a place that we want to live and stay and it's going to be affordable to live here. And people are going to get good jobs and we're going to not have to raise taxes on the county residents every couple of years. Did you, Mr. Skeen, you had something you wanted to add?
What Jim was talking about with the schedule, if that gets done, then you could basically set it up, as Ramilda was saying, with attracting the businesses you want in based on the schedule. And then you don't have to have a moratorium on people coming in because they're only going to come in based upon the schedule. So that would make sense and it would be non-discriminatory.
Ms. Smith, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. I forgot about you.
You touched on it a little bit, but one of the big problems is that, one of the big problems with this, one of the big problems with LERTAs in general and trying to figure out if they're going to be using this line is that this LERTA has, the North Point LERTA has nothing to do with PPL. Stopping LERTAs is not necessarily going to affect them because who knows? They may not have anybody who's using that power line and they're just expecting it to, to become a huge business one day. We're not privy to that information. And the other thing that's problematic with it is that we hear, we do hear one, we do hear sometimes that they come in here with a plan. But more often we hear that they're coming here and they're building to spec. And even if we said, we don't believe you, can you just tell us what your project is? Because I believe that most of the time they know, even when they say it's, they're building to speculation. They're never, they're not going to tell us. But I did want to just mention, if you do move forward with any kind of suit, you do have a constitutional right to enjoy the outdoors. Uh, it's the Environmental Rights Amendment, I believe. In the first article of the Pennsylvania State Constitution that you're entitled to the enjoyment of the historic scenic and aesthetic of the, um, environment around you. Which this may be a constitutional claim somewhere in there. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. Finally, uh, discussion regarding the resolution to address the consequences of the missed Commonwealth budget deadlines.
Not yet.
Public comment is at the end. Mr. Zoll, go ahead, Mr. Haas.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Again, time is of the essence on this one as well. So, um, on behalf of the four of us who all went down to Seacap, thank you council for sending us down there. I, I know, I don't want to speak very good. I think everybody really, including, um, Manager Croco had a, a, a real time of learning and growth. Um, it was just wonderful to already see what's going on in other parts of the state. A big unifying issue was the state budget impasse negatively is impacting everybody. So I crafted a resolution to take a stand against the state. Again, it has no teeth because we're just the county. We have no jurisdiction over Harrisburg. However, um, it encourages the state to get the job done and to return to Harrisburg and pass a budget as soon as possible. Uh, we have to pass a budget on time every year. We have to. They, um, they don't. The most recent time here for the edification of people listening at home or in the crowd, basically it talks about, um, delays of cost, county taxpayers' interest for borrowing money in order to continue operations during budget delays. Manager Croco spoke about that in recent, um, meetings. Most recently, the nine-month budget impasse in 2015 to 2016. The state begins their fiscal year on July 1st. So we had nine months of no state matches. We almost had to shut the doors and we had to take out a loan. Uh, it cost us a lot of money back in 2015, 2016. It was really ugly. So, um, it says here, whereas severe delays have threatened increased private tax for county residents with the potential for this to occur again this year in 2026. And whereas the failure of the governor legislature to pass a budget on time exacerbates these issues. And whereas the Pennsylvania House and Senate have recessed until after Labor Day, leaving counties to speculate about the priorities and funding streams from the Commonwealth budget of this fiscal year, which is an unjust burden. And whereas it's, the impasse is detrimental to the welfare of county taxpayers. Be it resolved that the county of Luzerne urges the governor legislature to. And whereas it's, the impasse is detrimental to the welfare of county taxpayers. Be it resolved, that the county loser urges the governor legislature to prioritize responsibilities, work collaboratively to finalize a budget without further delay. And be it further resolved, the governor legislature should not adjourn until the budget is in place. Okay, and the county should be promptly reimbursed for any and all interest money accrued on loans taken to cover expenses for the irresponsibility in Harrisburg. Okay, we know that's very polarizing in Harrisburg. I like working with the county, because, you know, R and D doesn't matter here at this table. Mine is just getting the job done for the people. They don't have the luxury in Harrisburg. I get there's other things at play. However, it severely handicaps our ability to get the job done. And it puts people in real jeopardy. A lot of people depend on these county services, as we know. So, uh, put this forth. It passed the whole membership by a vote of 98 to 19, which is like an 80, 85% passage. So, there's near unanimity, unanimity on this. And, um, all this does is send the message. Um, we would like to do this as soon as we possibly can, because a unified voice with all 67 counties would hopefully coerce a legislature to really do the job. School districts are gonna be hurting. Municipalities are gonna be hurting as well, but we're tasked with dealing with Luzerne County. So, um, there was something I just, as a last minute before this as well, um, I think you all get it. I don't know if, Ramil, if you get it as well, but they asked, what is, what is it costing Luzerne County? And I'd be forward to you if you didn't get it, but I'm assuming you did. Yeah, yeah, I'd be happy to. And just they, they want real proof of, of the burden that we're facing here. So, I encourage my colleagues to vote on this the next voting session. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the-
Ms. Stevenson.
Ability.
Sorry. This is relatively the same resolution we had at C cap. Um, it was extremely well received. Um, as Councilman Hawes says, it doesn't necessarily have teeth. But it does send that, um, that message up to the state that is extremely important, um, to be addressed. I think it's, it's extremely necessary to kind of put that language out into the universe and say, hey, we are gonna, we're advocating from a county level to make sure that you guys can get back there and do your job and make sure that funding is gonna trickle down the way it should be. Um, I was super impressed by this, Hawes. C cap was an amazing experience. I actually won Eagles tickets, guys. It was a pretty, it was a pretty good time. Um, but this was a, a very powerful piece that I think was super well-received, and, um, I'm absolutely supporting that.
Mr. Sabatino.
Thanks, Brittany.
I too would like to commend Councilman Hawes for bringing this to the C cap floor. Um, you did a lot of great work on this, and you lobbied all the right people, and you did your homework on this one. And I'd like to, uh, point out that we have a state representative here with us. So, you're, you're on the hot seat now. We were on the hot seat all night. Now, it's your turn. You know, please get back to Harrisburg and please do not make us have to, force us to get a loan and to keep this county afloat. Okay.
Uh, Mr. Rolovich?
I just wanna make one amendment. I'd like a signature page so I can sign it.
Oh, we could have, we could do that.
We've done that before. Absolutely happy to do it.
Uh, Mr. Perry, do you have something?
Thank, thanks, Mr. Hawes, for doing a great work that you do. And thanks for the council people that went down there. Fabulous work. Uh, keep going. Great.
Anybody else? All right, public comment. Um, I have a couple slips up here, but I think most people have left. Tricia Marnell, I think she's gone. Linda Urisch? Nope, okay. Andy Sanco? Did he leave too? All right, Mr. Zola.
Okay.
There you go.
I could kinda see where this seems to be heading. Very disappointing. We know about PUC, DEP, all these places. We're dead. It gets there, we're dead. Period. Everybody in this room knows it. Well, I don't. You know, I don't think that putting a moratorium on is going to stop development. I think it's gonna be a speed bump. Moratoriums could be lifted. Sometimes it takes very, very, very firm action to get something done, to get someone's attention. So, I'm not gonna drag this out. The people, you got, you heard all of us. You know our situation. We need your help. And I think at a very minimum, regardless of how the vote turns out, I would like to see it brought to a vote. And I think everyone in this room would agree with me. We don't wanna see this in December or January. They're gonna file at any time. September, early October, PPL is going to file. So, is there any chance we could get this, that we could at least agree? Like, can you guys do that tonight to say, "We're gonna bring this to a vote"?
It, it, as of right now, it'll be on the next voting session, Mr. Zola. Um, I mean, we certainly-
I mean, does that mean you'll, you'll vote on it like next time? I'm just trying to understand. I don't know the system.
Two weeks from today.
Two weeks from today?
Yeah.
You'll vote to either approve the moratorium?
Yes.
Okay. Up or down vote. All right. And again, guys, I wanna thank everyone who came out and actually looked at things. I do appreciate it. I wanna thank you for the resolution tonight. Really appreciate it. And not trying to like squeeze you guys for anything. It's just, this, this is a really big deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zola. Uh, Dan Eustace? Is he gone? Okay. Mr. Griffith? Good? All right. Anybody else in the room? Uh, go, go ahead, sir. And then Mr. Walsh.
Just the other Dan Eustace here.
Okay. You're the one from which, from-
From Whitehaven, Penn Lake, Penn Lake.
Whitehaven. I apologize. Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Just a quick thing, but like a big argument I hear for like this industry, the data centers, all that, is that like, oh, our taxes aren't gonna go up, but our power bills are gonna go up. We, we know that's gonna happen, you know? We also know our property values are probably gonna go down, you know? So, I, I mean, I'd, I'd rather my taxes go up than the cost of electric, you know? Pro, electricity goes up by 50% in a lot of these places, you know? That's probably, you know, you're right about even. So, just something to think about. But that's it. Thanks, guys.
All right, thank you. Mr. Walsh?
Jamie Walsh, Ross Township. Uh, something else for council you might wanna consider. Um, someone had mentioned the St. Charles, Missouri, uh, situation. They put a moratorium for a year on any data center development or expansion. And it's giving that town a year now to come up with an ordinance that everyone can live with. So, that's one thing. Um, actually, Dorance Township just did this two weeks ago. They put a moratorium on data center development. It's giving them a year to come up with an ordinance instead of rushing and ramming it through. Uh, that's another way. And, um, since those data centers aren't going to, uh, need power now, um, that gives time for maybe PPL to be a little bit more reasonable, uh, in their actions, because they've been very dismissive throughout this entire process. Um, and then, uh, I did receive a text this afternoon. I do not know, I'm not in leadership down in Harrisburg, but I did get an, uh, text this afternoon that, to clear our schedules for next week. Now, we did not get the official, um, uh, message from the Speaker of the House that we're going back next week. But, uh, hopefully, they're not calling us down there just for charades again like we got called down a couple of weeks ago. So, hopefully, they are working on this budget deal and, and they have something serious to promote to us to vote on. Um, the current situation in Pennsylvania, we are, we have $46 billion in revenue, and the governor is asking for almost $52 billion. It's, it's just not even close. And that's, that's the big hangup down there right now. Just so everybody kinda knows the 30,000-foot level. And then all the details fall into it, like, a lot of the things that they're, they're battling about, um, in leadership. So, that's all I have.
I have a question.
Yes.
How come, uh, you couldn't agree at least to have the same funding for our human services? That, nobody, that, I don't even know if that went to the floor. Just give us what we need from even last year's funding, so we can operate human services, so we can provide the services to the citizens of Luzerne County who need the services.
Um, the Senate, the Senate did send the bill down to the House and they, and the, uh, to fund those services at its current rate. And the, um, it never made it out of Appropriations Committee in the House. So, and just so everybody knows how it works down there, currently in the House, we have 102 Democrats to 101 Republicans. So, every committee down there has 14 Democrats and 12 Republicans. And they would not let it out of the committee. So, that's why it got crushed in the House. They didn't even call us down. It got crushed in appropriations and never made it to the House floor. But the Senate did try to pass, uh, current levels, which is like right around 47, total 47.6 billion. Or, yeah, 47, 47.6 billion. So, this is, this is the games that's happening down there. And, um, I will be back in two weeks, hopefully, with a lot better news for you. Okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Uh, anybody else? Public comment in the audience? All right, go ahead, sir. Just name a municipality one more time.
I spoke earlier about the bad business practices of PPL. When they first came to my property, they put a contract in front of me, and they said, "We're not gonna be building on your property." This is just so that we have the right to update and to, to maintain our things. And this is just for legal and for insurance reasons, bold-faced lie. PPL expected to come into this area quietly and get what they wanted without anybody knowing. The last thing they expected was alliance. The last thing they expected was 300 people showing up at that meeting. Okay? Now, we got their attention. Now, they're gonna try to play hardball. They're gonna try to push this thing through. If we wait till we get to the PUC, we're gonna lose. Now, I, I know you think you have a lot of faith in the PUC. We don't. By the ti- Yeah, by the time we get to the POC, PUC, they'll have a forward momentum we won't be able to stop. This has gotta be stopped now. They've gotta be held to the fire now before they go any further, because they're bullying us. They're pushing this through. They don't expect anybody to question anything. They expect to be able to do whatever they want. And if we start pushing back, they're gonna start pushing back. So, we, just, time is of the essence. We can't wait months. We can't. This has gotta happen soon. They're breaking ground. They've already broken ground. Has anybody mentioned that? They've already started clear-cutting property. They don't even have approval. They don't have any permits. They don't have approval from the townships. They started clear-cutting land. They don't care about the rules. They don't care about the law. They're bullies. They're pushing this thing through as fast as they can and as hard as they can. And they're expecting to get their way. I say no.
All right. Thank you. Uh, anybody else? Public comment in the audience? Okay, we have one person on the Zoom, Benjamin Bird.
Yes, sir. Uh, ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Benjamin Bird. Uh, I'm from Whitehaven, Pennsylvania, and I'm actively advocating for Dorance Township, uh, to assist with their, their zoning laws. Um, and to look at the ordinance and reshape it so that it, it makes some common sense. Uh, I have 25 years, over a quarter century, in public health, uh, environmental health, uh, occupational health and safety, specifically with electrical safety with the US Army, uh, for research, research development and engineering. Uh, outside of Pickett Finney Arsenal is, is where I was working. Uh, now retired. Um, what I would like to do is offer the council, uh, input, uh, from a, a personal health perspective of what we're looking at. I understand there's the financial perspective. I understand that there is the, the business development aspect of, uh, of all of what we're looking at now with, with data centers, with the high-voltage lines, with, uh, easement, uh, expansions, and the installation of the resources that are necessary to develop Luzerne County into the future. Um, however, uh, I believe that we need to really stop and take a closer look. And I apologize for not weighing in earlier, uh, as I was unable to due to personal emergency. But I did wanna at least offer, uh, the council, uh, maybe a little sanity check and provide a perspective from a human health aspect of what we're looking at. Uh, we're, we're dealing with some very permanent and very serious, uh, potential changes to our county that we can't predict, uh, as how widespread they are going to, uh, to continue to, to develop, uh, once we open that floodgate. Um, the one thing I did wanna really speak to, uh, is the potential for the 500-megawatt, uh, transmission line. And that line is a line that has traditionally been intended for direct transmission in larger, open, unpopulated areas over wide swaths of the country, uh, generally not a 12-mile track, uh, near a populated area. What you're looking at with that is, is electromagnetic field variance. Uh, there's E field, which is your voltage, and B field, which is your magnetic field based on load. And with a data center occupying, uh, the, the load structure of that, uh, that line, uh, it's going to be under full load, uh, constantly. Uh, there's gonna be very little let up to that, which is going to make that an unintentional transmitter of some pretty significant magnetic fields and potential for induced currents. There is a lot of epidemiology, uh, evidence that shows that this links to childhood leukemia, uh, developmental delays, developmental issues. Uh, but from a public health perspective, it also can induce currents on large metal bodies. It's going to require an infrastructure, smart design and change uh, well beyond just the minimum easement that PPL is going to be adhering to.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bird.
From, from that aspect, I, I'm gonna finish up in two seconds. Uh, I would be more than happy, uh, to offer the council electrical safety and a knowledge base and maybe perspective that they haven't had. For a, a brief presentation, if they'll so be interested, I will contact you at a later date via email. Um, but please consider taking me on my offer and, uh, hearing out that aspect of this.
Thank you, Mr. Bird. Okay, before we leave, I have a public comment, um, that I have from an email. Um, it's from Cheryl Sundry of Hanover Township. Uh, yeah, Ms. Lawrence started, because it's very long. "To Luzerne County, it deeply saddens me to have to write this today, but it appears that our Little Valley with a Heart is in desperate need of cardiac rehabilitation. Imagery branding also couldn't hurt due to the poor event management and complete lack of competent public and social media relations in 2025. Reputation matters more than anything else, because what's written about a community online may be the only chance they get to make a good impression. Many local entities and businesses are working hard to shine a positive light on this area. And all it took was one poor managed reputational crisis to undo all their positive contributions, while the rest of us are left in a town with a bad reputation that will inhibit our collective ability to succeed. The messaging for the Low Cut Connie controversy was bungled from the very start. These days, in addition to worrying about issues, received scrutiny from public figures like Steve Corbett and editorial teams from local newspapers. The story also made national news. There are threads on Reddit and numerous other social platforms. And now, thanks to AI, Luzerne County, Wilkes-Barre and Low Cut Connie will forever be negatively intertwined. Whenever anyone searches for any of these topics, I personally first heard about the controversy from someone living three hours outside of Luzerne County, because their coworkers were making fun of a city that replaced Low Cut Connie for having inappropriate lyrics about inclusion. They further noted that Low Cut Connie was being replaced with an ACDC cover band known for lyrics like "Big Balls," "Whole Lot of Rosie," "Giving the Dog a Bone," and "Love at First Feel" in the name of providing a more family and community-friendly event. I have to wonder if Ramilda Croco even bothered to vet her response with anybody providing messaging to the media that would sound so ridiculous to others when shared across social media platforms. Next, I learned about claims of some threat from people commenting on local public Facebook pages. These people found the claims to be suspicious, which isn't surprising. There were no details provided by any county officials about this unspecified threat. It's an unfortunate fact that local schools often must shut down because of threats. When they do, they alert the taxpaying public to the nature of the threat, and they let them know how the threat is being handled. Then, once everything is resolved and the school is ready to open again, taxpayers are told the results of the investigation by the authorities. This is exactly the way all such situations should be handled. Otherwise, you're just creating unnecessary controversy and doubt among the taxpaying public. The bottom line is you can't neutralize a potential reputational issue when your met, when your main messenger can't even manage to deliver a believable message to the public. People are now sharing theories online that are branding the Valley with a Heart as a valley full of hate, based on two variations of perceptions that have gained traction, because officials never bothered to provide the public with more information about the threats. Public perception number one, some county boomers with influence who fear diversity got their panties in a bunch and canceled Low Cut Connie on a whim without ever looking into their reputation as a band, just because, because they heard they stand for inclusion. Public perception number two, Luzerne County bowed to Trump administration officials- Public perception number two, Luzerne County bowed to Trump administration officials working with ICE in Pennsylvania who want to silence Low Cut Connie for their statements against the often inhumane tactics of ICE because they're afraid to stand up for values like empathy and compassion because county residents possess neither, and these officials need the votes. And there's another page and a half, but time is up. So is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.
Aye.